We have quite a busy agenda today and we are endangering of losing a quorum in about an hour to an hour and a half.
I move for adjournment.
Only if we can adjourn to your district office, Mr. President.
Good party over there, sir.
Mr. Chairman, before we ever see but through any comments or statements from Jordan, I want him to know that I think the entire constituency of PD1 is present for public hearings.
Thank you so much, so we can then move to, I'll accept the friend amendment from Mr. Hernandez to have the meeting in his district office.
With all of that said, it is now 10:17. This is a second form call of the council. Council members who are in the building, if they could please proceed to the council chambers. We have eight members present. As we await a quorum, I do believe we have a special presentation, so at this time, the chair recognizes Councilman Pacheco for a presentation. If we may please have your attention. Councilman Pacheco?
Mr. President, colleagues, let me briefly start off by thank you all for giving us this opportunity to do a presentation on a Wednesday. We are here to honor one of our performing groups, one of the major talents out of Mexico, Los Tucanes de Tijuana. We are here because of a friend of mine who is also here, Jaime Gonzalez, and also the great work at KMEX for putting together a public service announcement. Los Tucanes volunteered their time, free of any charge on their part, to encourage voter participation during the presidential election. So I want to, at this juncture, show you the PSA that was aired throughout KMEX, through different stations in the Los Angeles area. We know for a fact that KMEX was generous enough to provide a master copy for Channel 52 and Channel 22 to also air. So let's take a quick look at the PSA and then we'll resume the presentation.
The general message of the PSA is obviously it's important to participate and vote. By voting, obviously you are part of the system and Latinos will have a presence. And the ultimate message always in the Latino community is "su voto es su voz." And so, based on that work and the amount of response that we received, as you know, this was a large voter turnout for the Latino community during the November elections, I would like to bring up Los Tucanes and I will then read the resolution to you, my colleagues. So let me bring up Los Tucanes. Briefly on Los Tucanes, their music is described as a mixture of romantic ballads, humorous and rhythmic cumbias, and obviously their signature style of corridos. Corridos is a storytelling style born out of the Mexican Revolution. What Los Tucanes do is they're using this style right now to tell stories and present musical poems reflecting contemporary realities of life among the working poor of Mexico. Los Tucanes are a multi-platinum selling act who have sold more than five million units in the United States alone. Their recent albums have all been multi-platinum and have landed several hits at the top of Billboard's regional music charts. They are the only group to have seven albums simultaneously on the Billboard Top 50 album list, a record that has not been achieved by any other artist. They are clearly the people's choice reflected by their great performance not only in sales, but more importantly in their participation in civic activities. One of the most important things that the resolution highlights, and I think is very significant for us here in California and in Los Angeles, is that Los Tucanes were one of the few artists who publicly came out and shared their concern with the community regarding Proposition 187 and its effect on immigrant families and its effect on the Latino community. They used their popular appeal not only to entertain, but also to encourage the Latino immigrant community to participate fully in civic affairs of our community and thus achieve the respect, equality, and economic prosperity that is deserved here in this country. One of the things that we obviously always want to encourage is voter registration and voter participation. I did not show you the other PSA in which Los Tucanes were encouraging individuals to register before the November election, and that is also a big effort on our part in the Latino community to get more people participating. At this point, I want to present, and excuse me, I'm going to translate or go into Spanish at this point, because I do want to present to Los Tucanes the resolution.
Les quiero presentar a ustedes, Los Tucanes. Es un honor estar aquí con ustedes, con todo el trabajo que han hecho para nosotros en la comunidad. Les he dicho a la audiencia del servicio que han hecho con los anuncios de servicios públicos, también del trabajo que han hecho sobre lo que ha pasado con la proposición 187 y todo el trabajo que han hecho para que la comunidad latina participe aquí en este país. Pero me da mucho orgullo presentar a ustedes esta resolución adoptada aquí por este concilio de parte de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles. Es un honor que nosotros damos a mucha gente, pero a ustedes especialmente por el trabajo que hicieron con el Canal 34 y todos los anuncios que pusieron en la televisión, porque es muy importante siempre que los latinos voten, como nosotros decimos, "su voto es su voz." Y me da mucho orgullo presentarte esta resolución de parte del concilio y de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles.
Bueno, muchas gracias. En nombre de todos los muchachos que integramos el grupo de Los Tucanes de Tijuana, queremos darles las gracias al concejal, Pacheco, y sobre todo a la comunidad hispana por tomarnos en cuenta y por apoyar también pues esta invitación que nosotros les hicimos y lo seguiremos exhortando para que lo sigan haciendo, porque cada día tenemos que estar más unidos todos los latinos. Muchas gracias en nombre de Los Tucanes de Tijuana y estamos a sus órdenes. Gracias.
Joel Higuera would like to thank Councilman Pacheco on behalf of the group and also thank the fans and the community at large for listening to their requests and invitation to participate in the political process, because it is important for the community to unite and participate civically. So he thanked you on their behalf.
Jaime, this is the gentleman Jaime Gonzalez who helped us put this together. He recommended or suggested that we would do something to encourage voter participation. Los Tucanes were very interested in moving people to get out to vote. I had suggested he talk to Cristina Sanchez at KMEX, and KMEX volunteered to produce the PSAs for free, so we do want to thank KMEX and also for providing the duplicate copies for the other channels. Thank you, colleagues. We'll obviously move on to the meeting once we get a quorum. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Chair recognizes Councilman Padilla.
Antes de las fotos, por favor, muchachos. Esperando que hubieran llegado en traje y con sus instrumentos, ya tenía mis peticiones. No, pero muchísimas gracias por toda su ayuda. También nos acordamos que no solo en este anuncio de servicio público, pero estuvieron con nosotros en la centro de convención, en la arena deportiva de Los Ángeles durante el foro pidiendo la amnistía del año pasado. Así es que bien sabemos que no solo es durante la temporada de las elecciones que están con nosotros, sino su corazón, su compromiso a las causas sociales de la ciudad de Los Ángeles y de nuestra comunidad ha sido por largo plazo, y les agradecemos bastante. Mr. President, I just wanted to highlight and thank them again, not only for their presence and participation during this election season, but we know that just as recently as last year, they were with us at a forum and sort of a rally at the sports arena in Los Angeles, along with AFL-CIO, the County Federation of Labor, supporting the effort to bring about amnesty to a lot of the immigrant populations from various countries of origin. So we know that they're not just Johnny come latelys, but their heart and their commitment both as artists and their commitment to social causes for Los Angeles and the community is one that's been long term. So I wanted to thank them and recognizing them for that as well. Gracias.
Thank you, Councilman. We are awaiting one member for a quorum. So we'll stand by for a moment until we get one more member. Council deputies, for those of you who have members who are not excused and you may think they're in the building, if you could give a call up to the offices and request that they come down, we would appreciate it. Council members, we should be expecting a quorum in about five minutes. Ladies and gentlemen of the audience and those who are standing in the back, we do have council committee rooms 315 and 316 open to handle the overflow crowd here this morning. Both of the council committee rooms do have live audio and visual of the council proceedings. And so we are being requested by the fire marshal that we need to request some of you standing in the back to please proceed to 315 and 316 where you can watch the council proceedings. We cannot allow the council chambers to be this full in order to comply with safety standards. So if you would like to make your way to 315 and 316, the sergeants will help lead you in that direction. Would the council please come to order? This is a meeting of the city council of the city of Los Angeles this Wednesday, March 28, 2001. I'm Councilman Rudy Savornich Jr., Assistant President Pro Tem, serving as presiding officer today due to the excused absences of Council President Ferraro and Council President Pro Tem Galanter. There are 15 council districts in the city of Los Angeles and we are currently being viewed on LA City View, Channel 35. This council meeting will be repeated this evening at 7:30, and all council meetings will begin on Sunday at 10 o'clock, and you will be able to see all three council meetings for the week. Prior to our beginning, I promised last night that I would say hello to the 186th Street Neighborhood Association and Harbor Gateway, so to all our friends in the Neighborhood Association, hello and thank you for viewing. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Bernsen, Chick, Fier, Galanter, Hernandez, Holden, Miskowski, Pacheco, Padilla, Riley, Tim, Miss Swardich, Wax, Walters, Ferraro, 10 members present at quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First item of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Without objection, so ordered.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Without objection, so ordered.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there are several items requesting to be continued. Item number four, request to continue that item to April 4th.
Without objection, item number four is continued until April 4th.
Item number eight, applicant requests continuance to May 1st.
Without objection, item number eight is continued until May 1st.
And in closed session, item 62B and D, the city attorneys requesting those items be continued to April 3rd.
Was that C and D, Madam Clerk?
B and D, I'm sorry.
B and D. Is there any objection to continuing those two closed session items? Okay, without objection, those are continued.
On the regular agenda, items noted for public hearing, items 1 through 7 are building and safety reports, their confirmation of assessments, with the exception of item number four which has already been continued, those items can be confirmed.
Okay, do we have any cards on any of those items?
I believe item number one has a card.
Okay.
I'm sorry, that was on the special meeting. Item one doesn't have a card.
Okay. Are there any persons in the audience that want to be heard on items number 1 through 7? Okay, seeing none, the public comment period is closed. Are there any council members that want to be heard on items 1 through 7? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on items 1 through 7 and tabulate the vote?
10 ayes.
Those items are approved. Next item, Madam Clerk?
On the regular agenda, item number nine is Planning Line Use Management Committee Report. There is a card on the item.
Okay. We do have a few cards on item number nine, and so we're going to call item nine special for a moment. And Madam Clerk, we would like to call, without objection for the council, item number 47 at this time, and the chair would like to recognize Councilwoman Chik.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to ask our Information Technology Agency people to come forward. And colleagues, there's a very brief demonstration that they're going to give, but I'm very pleased that we're taking a giant step forward today with the work that our ITA, Information Technology Agency, employees have produced for us. I was creating a pilot program in my district to involve our sanitation workers in being extra pairs of eyes and ears for us in terms of when they're out in our neighborhoods every day, they notice problems. And very often the things that they're seeing that need correcting are not within the jurisdiction of the Bureau of Sanitation. So we created a very simple form for the drivers and the trash collectors to use to check off, not taking up any of their extra time, and they were enthusiastically interested in being helpers to the city to resolve problems. But it turned out that those forms needed to come to my office to be relayed to other city departments, because low and behold, we didn't have a way, and we still don't, for city departments and city employees to direct
Council members, we should be expecting a quorum in about five minutes. Ladies and gentlemen of the audience and those who are standing in the back, we do have council committee rooms 315 and 316 open to handle the overflow crowd here this morning. Both of the council committee rooms do have live audio and visual of the council proceedings. And so we are being requested by the fire marshal that we need to request some of you standing in the back to please proceed to 315 and 316 where you can watch the council proceedings. We cannot allow the council chambers to be this full in order to comply with safety standards. So if you would like to make your way to 315 and 316, the sergeants will help lead you in that direction. Okay, here we go. Would the council please come to order? This is a meeting of the City Council of the City of Los Angeles this Wednesday, March 28, 2001. I'm Councilman Rudy Savornich Jr., Assistant President Pro Tem, serving as presiding officer today due to the excused absences of Council President Ferraro and Council President Pro Tem Galanter. There are 15 council districts in the city of Los Angeles and we are currently being viewed on LA City View, Channel 35. This council meeting will be repeated this evening at 7:30 and all council meetings will begin on Sunday at 10 o'clock and you will be able to see all three council meetings for the week. Prior to our beginning, I promised last night that I would say hello to the 186th Street Neighborhood Association and Harbor Gateway. So to all our friends in the Neighborhood Association, hello and thank you for viewing. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Bernson, Chick, Fuhr, Galanter, Hernandez, Holden, Misakowski, Patek, Pedea, Riley, Tim, Miss Savornich, Wax, Walters, Ferraro, 10 members present at quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First item of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Without objection, so ordered.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Without objection, so ordered.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there are several items requesting to be continued. Item number four, request to continue that item to April 4.
Without objection, item number four is continued until April 4.
Item number eight, applicant requests continuance to May 1.
Without objection, item number eight is continued until May 1.
And in closed session, items 62B and D, the city attorneys requesting those items be continued to April 3.
Was that C and D, Madam Clerk?
B and D, I'm sorry.
B and D. Is there any objection to continuing those two closed session items? Okay, without objection, those are continued.
On the regular agenda, items noticed for public hearing, items 1 through 7 are building and safety reports, their confirmation of assessments, with the exception of item number four which has already been continued, those items can be confirmed.
Okay. Do we have any cards on any of those items?
I believe item number one has a card.
Okay.
I'm sorry, that was on the special meeting. Item one doesn't have a card.
Okay. Are there any persons in the audience that want to be heard on items number 1 through 7? Okay, seeing none, the public comment period is closed. Are there any council members that want to be heard on items 1 through 7? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on items 1 through 7 and tabulate the vote?
10 ayes.
Those items are approved. Next item, Madam Clerk?
On the regular agenda, item number nine is Planning and Use Management Committee Report. There is a card on the item.
Okay. We do have a few cards on item number nine, and so we're going to call item nine special for a moment. And Madam Clerk, we would like to call, without objection for the council, item number 47 at this time, and the chair would like to recognize Councilwoman Chick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to ask our Information Technology Agency people to come forward. And colleagues, there's a very brief demonstration that they're going to give, but I'm very pleased that we're taking a giant step forward today with the work that our ITA, Information Technology Agency, employees have produced for us. I was creating a pilot program in my district to involve our sanitation workers in being extra pairs of eyes and ears for us in terms of when they're out in our neighborhoods every day, they notice problems. And very often, the things that they're seeing that need correcting are not within the jurisdiction of the Bureau of Sanitation. So we created a very simple form for the drivers and the trash collectors to use to check off, not taking up any of their extra time, and they were enthusiastically interested in being helpers to the city to resolve problems. But it turned out that those forms needed to come to my office to be relayed to other city departments because lo and behold, we didn't have a way, and we still don't, for city departments and city employees to direct problems to each other's attention. And so in response to that dilemma, ITA staff quickly went to work, put their brain power into it, and came up with a cost-free way, an immediate way, and a very simple way, for us to do something for the first time, and that's to have extra pairs of eyes and ears throughout our city and to facilitate one department notifying another of a problem or a situation that needs their attention. This form is going to accomplish that, and I very much see it as the first step to then going from Intranet to Internet and allowing the public to communicate with us in the same kind of way. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to ITA to educate us on this very new and wonderful way of communicating.
Good morning, council members. My name is Richard Tom from ITA and I'm with Bill Kreitz of ORS. We wanted to discuss the Community Enhancement E-Request Form. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Bill for a quick overview of the project.
The item before you, as Councilmember Chick mentioned, is a Joint CLA/ORS report on this Community Enhancement Request Form. As a council member mentioned, this is a one-page, user-friendly, electronic form that is going, will be placed on the city's Intranet for use by city employees, and when they find or identify a quality of life issue such as a pothole, graffiti, et cetera, in the course of their regular job, though they may not be in the department that handles that type of issue, they can pull this form up on the Intranet and fill it out. It's a one-page form. They will click a submit button. It will automatically and electronically be routed to the appropriate department for entering into their existing service request system. As the council member mentioned, there is no cost to developing this form and this process, and neither is there a cost to the department to use the form. It will be implemented, should the council approve this, within 30 to 60 days. And at this point, I would like to turn this over to Richard Tom of ITA to give a demonstration.
If we could have the form on the screen, please. Okay, this is the form that was developed in conjunction with ORS, ITA, and Council District III. Again, this is an easy-to-use form that has dropdown menus. We can take a look at this, dropdown menus to easily enter the information. It has the information for the person reporting. Again, more dropdown menus to facilitate easy entry. Also has the address of the particular location. If the exact address is not noted, you're able to put in a approximate location of the address. And what we do have here are checkboxes for specific types of occurrences within the city. Essentially, the checkboxes are automatically, are clicked. You can click on and off on these. And based on the type of information selected, such as street repair or sidewalk repair, this form will automatically be submitted to the appropriate department. And as you can see, we also have additional information for Department of Water and Power, Fire Department, LAPD, and other city departments. In addition, we have an easy-to-use comment box where you can easily type information in. And again, as Bill earlier stated, once you click on the submit button, it automatically routes it to the appropriate departments. Again, we basically did some benchmark testing. This actually only takes somewhere in the neighborhood of a minute to a minute and a half to actually fill out. In addition, we have, even though this is an electronic form, we have specifically designed it to be used in a paper format as well. And again, this is again, exactly how easy it is to submit a request to the particular departments now.
If I might conclude, I might say, or emphasize, the beauty of this form is that this will be available to all city employees who have access to a city personal computer. And it completely eliminates having to look up a department, call a department, or check the city service directory in order to determine what department handles a specific issue or problem.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, colleagues. I look forward to taking the show on the road and seeing how this works well within the city and then how it works well partnering with the public. I want to thank you, gentlemen, for a job well done. And I'm glad we learned about this through the pilot project and now we've fixed it. Thanks to your work.
Thank you, Councilwoman Chick. Chair recognizes Councilman Pedea.
Hey, guys, not so fast. You thought it was going to be easy. No, actually, I do rise in support of the form. I want to thank and commend Councilmember Chick for her leadership in bringing this particular piece forward. I do have some questions, however, because as you know, this isn't the only technology project going on in the city right now. As you know, this isn't our only attempt at trying to get city departments to coordinate, to communicate. And it's not, our efforts aren't only limited to the scope of within the city family, but also trying to create some mediums of communication along various technologies to the public as a whole. And so my question is this. I have a couple of questions. The first, right now, this is being driven by what city workers, whether it's through sanitation, or street services, or anybody else that's out there, may observe. And if there's something that they can bring to the attention, or call to the attention of their counterparts in other departments or other agencies, they want to be able to do that. From a human interest perspective, would they, the city employees out there in communities, inherently see things different, or different issues, or different needs and concerns from what local residents may be seeing?
I don't believe so, council member.
And I would agree. And I would agree. And so therefore, I want to make sure that we're tying things together. Because like I said, there's other initiatives going on right now, inclusive of today, this afternoon, we're having a joint committee meeting between the Information Technology and General Services Committee, along with the Budget and Finance Committee, on the proposed 311E Government Project. And so although the form looks good, and I'm agreeing concept that we need to make it easier for city employees to communicate to one another, to better address community issues, I want to make sure that from a technological standpoint, from a design, from an architecture, and from a system standpoint, that as we move forward with this particular form, that we're putting into place a compatible system to where the 311E Government Project is headed as well. Because I'd hate for us to invest a lot of time, a lot of energy, and a lot of money into the development of this system if at the end of the day, when we launch a full-fledged 311E Government System, that we will have to redo this, given a different operating system, given different applications, or given different, you know, other factors. I'd hate for us to invest in beta if at the end of the day, it's going to be VHS, if you know what I'm saying. And so please, from a technological standpoint, can you tell me how we're addressing that concern?
Yes, Councilman. This is Mark Wolf with the Information Technology Agency. This Community Enhancement Form is being implemented as an interim solution, leveraging existing citywide forms, technology that we currently have place in the city. This will be able to, over time, be built into the citywide service request system when that is developed. So this can evolve into being part of that system. So this will be basically an interim solution that will be used until that system is, until that system is established.
But, okay, and I believe you. I want to believe in, I want to hear the details on, again, how technically this links into the platform that our new website, which we're launching soon, is being built on, how we're laying the groundwork for, again, the 311 and E-Government. The E-Government piece being how constituents and residents at large can access city information and city services. The 311 part being the phone-based system to make it easy for people to access that city information and city services, but knowing that the call operators who will answer those 311 calls need a reliable, not only city directory to rely on, but a service request system eventually to rely on. So again, the face and the makeup of the form is one thing. The architectural application is another. And so, again, how are we building that connectivity or the compatibility from the outset?
Well, the same tools that are utilized for this product could be migrated eventually to the citywide service, service request form and integrated with that system. So for the time being, until there is the citywide service request system, this would be a standalone operation. But when that new system would be put in place, the technology that was used for this could be integrated into the citywide service request form.
Okay, then. And that'll suffice for today. Mr. President, if I may, I'd like to say I do support this effort and will vote in favor today, but would request a follow-up report to the ITGS Committee in the context of our, of our 311E Government private reports, and again, explaining exactly how this technically fits together. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Is there any other council member that wishes to speak on this item? If not, Madam Clerk, I do believe we have some recommendations before us. So would you open the roll and tabulate the vote?
10 ayes.
That item is approved. Fourth with. Next item.
Mr. President, items nine and 10 on the agenda have, both have our committee reports and have cards on the items. Do you wish to hold those and call them special?
Yeah, why don't we call those special? Next?
Items for which public hearings have been held, items 11 through 38.
I do believe we have some speaker cards on some of those items. So we have speakers' cards on items 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19. So we'll call those special. Are there any other specials, council members? Councilwoman Misakowski on item number 24, Technical Amendment.
And that would be to change recommendation number five out of Budget and Finance Committee to read that the department be authorized to release, subject to review by ORS, the request for proposal for operation of three spay and neuter clinics.
Okay, we'll make that part of the report. So when we vote on them. Are there any other specials, council members?
Mr. Chair, on item 26, there was supposed to be a technical amendment, and I don't have the wording at this time, so I'd like to hold that on the table.
Okay, we'll hold item 26 on the table for a moment. Madam Clerk, could you repeat the items before us one last time, and then we'll call the roll if there are no other specials?
Items 11, 12, 13, 16 was called special, 20, excuse, 20 through, 23, 27 through 30, 20, excuse me, 27 through 38.
Are there any other specials? Mr. Fuhr.
I can't tell. Is 24 among those? I have a minor amendment to make. Yeah, is it called special for another purpose or for this purpose?
Councilwoman Misakowski made an amending motion, just a technical amendment a few moments ago.
Okay, fine.
And I think it was taken care of, right, Councilwoman?
Yes, thanks.
Okay, so we can proceed?
24?
Okay, we'll proceed on that item. Okay, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on those items and tabulate the vote?
11 ayes.
Those items are approved. And the ordinances on those items will be continued for one week. Next items.
Items for which public hearings have not been held, items 39 through 61.
Okay. First, let's call the items with speaker cards special, which are items number 44. We're only going through 61, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, so I, we'll call 44 special. Are there any other specials by council members at this time? Again, Madam Clerk, the numbers?
Items 39 through 61.
39 through 61. 44 has been called special. Any other specials, council members? Why don't we hold 43 on the desk in anticipation of Mr. Bernson possibly wanting to call it special? Okay, Mr. Bernson is fine with that item. So Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on those items and tabulate the vote?
11 ayes.
Those items are approved. Next items. We'll carry the orders over one week on those also.
Next, Mr. President, as number 62 is a closed session, do you wish to hold that public hearing on 62A first, or continue on to the item on the continued agenda?
I think what we should do is that why don't we send item number 63 on the continued agenda to Mr. Hernandez's committee, which is the CED Committee? And why don't we take a public hearing on item number 62A at this time in order that the folks who have made the trip all the way down to City Hall can be on their way and will hold the public hearing. Right after we do that, colleagues and audience, we will have the public hearing on item number 44, and then we will proceed with the rest of the items which have been called special, who have speakers' cards. So we'll move along quite quickly. So at this time, we will go to item number 62A, a public hearing. What I would like to ask those in the audience to do, whose names I will call, I'm going to call you in groups of five, and if you would please line up behind the podium, the one with the microphone that is raised, and then I'll call another group of five folks as we start to get down to the last one or two speakers, so we can move it along. I would ask that you can keep your comments brief in order that we can hear all of the speakers, also not to be repetitious. And if you could keep your comments to approximately a minute or less, that way, we, everybody who wants to be heard, can be heard this morning. So at this time, the first five speakers are Dawn Maury, Bee Canterbury-Lavery, Chuck Choi, Jeffrey Goldfarb, and Zell Branson. If you folks could please come forward and prepare to speak, go right ahead.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the council, for the record, my name is Dawn Maury, 5757 Century Boulevard. I'm here representing Chinatown community. I'm here just to kick off the first few speakers. I wanted to give you a brief summary of what we have done and who you will be hearing. This morning, you will hear from not only members of the business community in Chinatown, but also residents, service providers, and you will also hear from a constitutional authority by the name of Jeffrey Goldfarb, and also an attorney by the name of Ozell Branson. These two gentlemen have been working with Chinatown to give us advice on constitutional law as it applies to this particular case. We will als, you will also hear from members of the other parts of Los Angeles. There are other communities in this city that are very, very interested in this issue and that have deep concerns about this particular issue. You'll also hear from them. I just want to say that over the past year or so, we have been grappling with this particular issue, that being the placement of this adult entertainment use in Chinatown, something that we dearly oppose because it does change the quality of life in our community. It is an issue that has galvanized the community like no other issue in the past 25 years. If you know Chinatown, we have always been kind of a quiet part of this city. But this particular issue has galvanized not only business, but residents, service providers, church members, everybody that, that lives and, and patronizes the Chinese community. And so what we would ask you this morning is that when you do go into closed session, that you do vote to fight this case and to provide the city attorney and this city with whatever resources necessary in order to fight this, this particular case. I thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Lavery?
Good morning. My name is Bee Canterbury-Lavery, and I'm accompanied by David Lee, who I'm, I'm sure many of you know. He is one of the, represents one of the oldest families in Chinatown, and he is also the president of the National Association of Chinese Americans. I'm here representing Mrs. Carolyn Amundsen and the Los Angeles-Guangzhou Sister City Association, which is sponsored by the mayor and the Los Angeles City Council. I'm also executive director of the Citywide Advisory Committee to the Chinese Business Council. The offices of the Los Angeles-Guangzhou Sister City Association are located at 800 North Broadway in a building adjacent to 211 Alpan Street. The Sister City Association will celebrate its 20th anniversary as a sister city with China by hosting the official delegation of the Guangzhou mayor and other officials from China this coming year. To have an unsavory establishment such as an adult entertainment nude showgirl bar next next door will be an extreme embarrassment to the city of Los Angeles and to the mayor and the city council. The Advisory Committee to the Chinatown Business Council includes many prominent citizens in Los Angeles, actress Lisa Liu, Ann Nelson, Vice President of CBS, author Lisa C., Thel De Singer, the Chair of the Sister Cities International, artist Gail Garner Rosky, Farina Van Patten of the Asia Society, and I could go on and on. But I would now like to introduce David Lee, who will speak to you as Vice Chair of the Los Angeles Guangzhou Sister City Committee and the National Association of Chinese Americans.
Thank you. Councilman, I would say it's not a pleasure to be here, but unnecessary for me to be here, because our community is a silenced community. We never give any troubles. I know our councilmen know that, that we never give them any headaches, so we eat pretty well. Therefore, that this time is different. This time, when you are presenting something that bring our community down instead of up, that we're all very, very upset. I'm sure you never have seen, we have united as well, have so many citizens come over here tonight, particularly begging for you to make sure that we don't have to make this, uh, Chinatown going up instead of going down, because Los Angeles Chinatown considered America one of the most outstanding Chinatowns. So if we're gonna put something like that back down there, we will bring the community down again, that we don't like to have. But there's many other places they have, because they have Spring Street, Main Street, and South Broadway, they have many other places. I think I recommend they go to that direction, not in our community, and I hope you consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Choi.
Good morning, dear, dear council members. My name is Chuck Choi, Principal of Castilla Elementary School, which is located in the heart of Chinatown. The school is surrounded by family-owned businesses and also residents. I'm extremely concerned about the negative impact the adult business will have on all the children in our community. Besides the one thousand elementary students that I have, another thousand or so middle and high school students are dropped off every single school day at the corner of Alpine and Yale Street, just a block and a half away from two-eleven Alpine. Now Chinatown is a working-class community, so many of the parents work long hours. These children have no supervision, and they do not go home. For the older children, the senior citizens of the community, they depend on many of the shops for their daily living in the immediate surrounding at two-eleven Alpine. I believe if the adult business is established, undesirable and criminal elements will follow suit. Who is going to protect the children? As a principal, I have many occasions where I have to take care of children when their parents do not show up to, to pick them up. My duty is to make sure that they are cared for and they feel safe while they're waiting for their parents. Now, there's a term in Latin that describes that responsibility. Interestingly enough, there is a Chinese term also, fu mǔ guān, translated, father, mother, councils, or officials. According to the Chinese culture, elected officials are honored and respected by the people as parents, and they are also expected to make sound decisions for the common good of all people. I'm glad that in my family, I have the power to block off harmful and undesirable cable channels in order to protect my children. I urge you therefore, council fathers, council mothers, as our fu mǔ guān, you have the duty to provide a safe and healthy environment for us. You also have the power to, once and for all, shut off the undesirable and immoral program coming through two-eleven Alpine Street. I can assure you, when you do that, you will be honored and respected by all your children, the young who are at school, the old who are here, and those of us who are somewhere in between, in this family we call Chinatown. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Goldfarb.
Council members, thank you very much for the time. Uh, my name is Jeff Goldfarb. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Vertan and Tucker. Uh, my practice is in the area of First Amendment litigation and specifically defending adult-oriented business ordinances for various cities throughout California. I have litigated a number of these cases in the defense of city ordinances and won approximately eighty percent of those cases. I'm familiar with the ca, the way the cases are tried and familiar with what's necessary for a case to be considered a winnable case. I've been intimately involved in this case, and, and I can say that after reviewing the case and after having been involved in the case, that this is in fact a winnable case. The question, and what I'd like to address, is why this is a winnable case? Two very important reasons. And the first reason is because these cases are tried on the record, and the city has a fabulous record that they have developed in this case. The record is, is very supportive and complete with evidence that supports the city's decision upholding the city's regulations on the issuance of building permits to the specific business that applied. The second issue is because the city is right on with regard to the law. I'd like to address the specific legal issue that's been raised in this case. The issue in the case, the legal issue in the case is whether the city's ordinance or action is unconstitutional under the Ninth Circuit's decision in Young v. City of Simi Valley. The city's ordinance is constitutional; it is not unconstitutional. When analyzing the constitutionality of an adult-oriented business ordinance, both the Supreme Court and the Ninth Circuit agree that the rule is that the city's regulatory scheme cannot work in a way which denies adult business owners a reasonable opportunity to own and operate an adult business somewhere in the city. It's a quote out of the Simi Valley case. In the Simi Valley case, the Ninth Circuit concluded that when three distinct elements of the city's adult-oriented business ordinance were considered together, the ordinance worked in a way which failed to provide a reasonable opportunity for the adult-oriented business owner in that city from starting his business. That is very different from the way the city's ordinance works here, and let me explain why. First, in the Simi Valley ordinance, and in the Simi Valley case, the court found that out of the entire city, there were only four discrete parcels of property upon which somebody could start and operate an adult-oriented business. Second, in order to operate an adult-oriented business in the city of Simi Valley, one needed an adult-oriented business permit, which involved a permitting process that was extremely complicated and very time-consuming. The, the third issue in the case was that after reviewing the entire city, they found that there was not a single adult business that had been established anywhere in the city. The situation in the city of Los Angeles is substantially different. In the city of Los Angeles, anyone who argue, well, let me say it this way, anyone who argues that the city ordinance works in a way which prohibits adult-oriented businesses from being opened or operated in the city would have to be laughed out of court. The city has a substantial number of adult-oriented business ordinances, and the record is in fact replete with evidence that demonstrates that. Second, the process for getting a building permit for an adult-oriented business in the city of Los Angeles is the same as a, getting a building permit for what's been considered to be a sensitive use, that is, a use that creates around itself a buffer of five hundred feet which prevents the development of an adult-oriented business from being around it. As a result, the ordinance doesn't work in a way which typically gives a sensitive use the ability to rush in and block an adult use, as was the case in Simi Valley. Third, the city zoning ordinance is such that there are hundreds upon hundreds of different sites within the city upon which one can start an adult-oriented business.
Sir.
Sir, oh, okay, and let me just get to my last point then. Finally, and perhaps most important, sensitive uses aren't even permitted in most of the zones in which somebody could open and operate an adult-oriented business in the city. Therefore, it would be incorrect to argue that somebody with a sensitive use would always be in a position to block an adult-oriented business with the city. Having said that, I would simply like to say that the city's ordinance is in fact constitutional; it was applied in a constitutional way, and you have on your hands a very, very winnable case. Thank you very much for your time, and I'm sorry I went over.
Mr. Branson.
Hi. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I'm here basically in a support role for Mr. Goldfarb. The only prepared comments that I would give you are that, in, in terms of the fact-intensive analysis in this case, the, uh, the applicants for the two-eleven Alpine adult use have emphasized, they seem to be backing away from it now, but, but their case, uh, in large measure below, uh, before the city, was the argument that the school is a sham, doesn't exist, and so forth. It's now coming up on its second full year of operation. Uh, it's a recognized, uh, curriculum, English as a Second Language Immersion Curriculum. It's administered as part of the Rolling Hills Preparatory School, which, as you know, is a substantial educational institution in Southern California, um, and it is, actually it's looking for more space, uh, within the area, uh, that it's located now. I think it's going to expand a bit, and it has a waiting list. If there, the only other function I had here today was to answer any questions, should there be any on legal points from the council persons. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. The next five speakers, Diane Poon, Peter Tsai, William Yang, Kenneth Yi, and Corey Young. If those folks could please make their way to the podium.
Good morning, and council members. My name is Diane Poon. I'm representing Chinatown Service Center. I'm the executive director of Chinatown Service Center. The center serves about eleven thousand clients a year. That's just the size of the residents in Chinatown. We see a lot of people, from infants to the seniors. We provide lots of service, including the prenatal care, medical services, health education, after-school programs, as well as counseling programs and the senior in-home care. I have met with a lot of them, and on behalf of, actually, the residents, the employees, and the youth of Chinatown, as you know already, we don't want two-eleven Alpine in Chinatown. Chinatown is a community that we respect a lot. We have a lot of integrity in, in Chinatown, and as you can see, all of us are here today together, very cap, passionately, to tell you that we don't need this kind of business. We just formed the very first Chinatown business improvement district, and our hope is to generate business in Chinatown, but not the type of business that we're talking about, the adult entertainment business. We are also grateful for the blue line to come through Chinatown, but we don't want to make it convenient for the visitors of two-eleven Alpine. We also strongly believe in education and also helping our youth and after-school programs, but not the type of activities that the two-eleven Alpine has in mind. We work very hard to create job opportunities for our residents in Chinatown, but not the job openings that we will have, um, two-eleven will create. Lastly, we also provide affordable housing for Chinatown, but not affordable adult entertainment in Chinatown. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Tsai.
Good morning, President and council members. My name is Peter Tsai, T-S-A-I. I'm one of the directors of the L.A. Chinese Chamber of Commerce. On behalf of the L.A. Chinese Chamber of Commerce, we strongly oppose any settlement that would reopen the permitting process for a nude dance bar to be in the heart of Chinatown. Our annual Golden Dragon Parade, Carnival, and Street Fair are programs to be enjoyed by children and families. An adult entertainment business is detrimental to our efforts to promote Chinatown as a safe, fun place for families. Our merchants have worked long and hard to foster a business environment that is culturally and family-oriented, and we do hope that you support that as well. In this effort, the L.A. Chinese Chamber of Commerce is joined by other family and business associations in Chinatown, all working hard to pass on their rich culture to the next generation. I will not have time to read their letters, but please let me report the names and addresses. Southern California Teochew Association, T-E-O-C-H-E-W, located near the proposed new Chinatown gateway. This is only half a block south of two-eleven Alpine Street. Southern California Fouquierne Association, located at six-ten Alpine, same street as two-eleven Alpine. Shun Wu San Charity with eight hundred members, promoting strong ethical and moral values through their Buddhist temple at thirteen-oh-five North Broadway. Cambodian Ethnic Chinese Association at six-seventy-six North Spring, Spring Street, a block south of two-eleven Alpine. Alliance of Chinese-American Groups in the USA, a business alliance of more than a hundred and twenty groups with thousands of members, whose headquarters is only fifty yards east of two-eleven Alpine Street. Their organization receives frequent visitors from all over the world, including business leaders and foreign dignitaries. And Vietnam-Chinese newspapers servicing the Indo-Chinese community all over the U.S. for the last twenty-one years, normally apolitical, but feels obligated to join us this time.
Sir.
Chinatown is united. We strongly urge the L.A. Chinese, uh, City Council not to compromise and allow any type of adult entertainment business in the Chinatown community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, President of the council and members of the council. Chinatown is a very unique community. Chinatown's name describes the predominant ethnic group that founded the community and continues to live and work. Chinatown is more than a destination to visitors; it is also a culture, a place of in the rich history of Los Angeles. For tourists, Chinatown is a place where very different culture can be seen without traveling thousands of miles across the ocean. For many present-generation Chinese-Americans, Chinatown is as close to the ancestral homes as they will ever get. For the residents of Chinatown, this is home. It is for these reasons that I am urging you, the members of the City Council of the City of Los Angeles, to prevent inappropriate adult entertainment from being established in Chinatown. Adult entertainment may have a place in the community, but certainly not in a community as unique as Chinatown. Past history has shown that adult entertainment frequently attracts additional criminal activities to the area. When I bring my family to Chinatown for dinner, the last thing I want my children, my kids exposed to is a nude adult entertainment facility. The business people in Chinatown have worked very hard revitalized the community, beginning with establishing the Business Improvement District only last December. Chinatown has made great progress in creating a community that is a safe place to visit, and more importantly, a safe place to live. Allowing the presence of an adult entertainment within the Chinatown community is most only a step backwards. I must remind you that Chinatown is home to many people, both young and old. Would you like to have an adult entertainment facility in the immediate neighborhood of where you live and work? Chinatown is not nameless, faceless place, but a living, breathing community, proud of its past and looking forward for its future. That future is in your hands. Thank you very much.
How many members of the city council? My name is Kenneth Yi. I'm one of the pastors of the First Chinese Baptist Church, but I'm here today not speaking only as a pastor, but as a member of the community with a civic interest. Let me begin by saying not a single one of you as council members are off the hook just because you don't represent Chinatown. I present to all of you, and each and every one of you, in days previous to today and this morning, between seven thousand and ten thousand signatures collected from all over the city, from the north, south, east, and west. They have been collected in the PTAs, in the high-tech industry, in the aerospace industry, in the schools, everywhere where our people are, and they represent your community. They include names like Chavez, Talantino, Poon, Gomez, Funey, Barnes, Wu, Beaver, and on and on. And so they are paying attention to how you will vote this morning. But I also represent in a special way the churches of Chinatown, the two Chinese churches and the two Korean churches, and I want to speak on behalf of the growing mix of population that is in Chinatown, to say that we want you to stand with Chinatown and to vote to support the opposition to allowing this so-called business to come into Chinatown. Over the years since I've been back as a pastor of this church of mine, I have sat on many committees for the improvement of Chinatown. We have gone into the restaurants during their afternoon breaks to teach English as a second language. We have gone into the sewing factories during their lunch breaks to give them a little bit of a break, a little bit of entertainment from their hard work at their piece work. We have fought- We have fought to get security into Chinatown, and I can tell you that it has not been a battle of miles, it's been a battle of inches, half inches, and quarter inches. And if you allow this to come into Chinatown, you will wipe all that out and you will wipe out what the city itself has been trying to do by approving this BID. Let me tell you what I know from the inside out, because when we establish local police walkarounds, I walked around with Sergeant Gary, I won't mention his last name, and I asked him, "Gary, why are there so many criminal activities increasing in Chinatown?" And you know what he told me? He says, "Because of the liquor store here." We have one liquor store, and he says everyone who leaves Boche, everybody who leaves the Twin Towers, everybody who comes out of the federal prison, that's the first thing they do is they get on the bus or they find their way to the liquor store. And if you allow this establishment to come into Chinatown, you're going to be adding air, fuel, and a spark, and it'll be an explosion. And so that's what he told me, one of our own LAPD Blue. We will be the new Mecca for this kind of activity, because we all know that it's not going to be supported by the people of Chinatown. It's going to be supported by people from every part of the city, and that's why we want a petition to represent every part of the city. Talk about negative secondary effects. I could right now cite to you 25 nationwide studies on the harmful effects that allowing such an establishment into our community will bring. This is not about civil liberties for 211. It's about money. It's about a lot of money. It's about a secondary issue, the abuse of the power that money can bring, and their willingness to come into this community, a conservative, respectful, high in ethics, strong in sensitivities type of community, and their thoughtless, thoughtless exercise of their freedom of choice shows how they will operate callously in the future.
Thank you, sir.
They care nothing for Chinatown. Let me close and ask you one thing.
Sir? If you could, I have seven other speakers that wish to speak.
Thirty seconds.
How about 10?
10 seconds.
Nine.
I like cantors in the Fairfax community. I go and get my crepe block and my matzo ball soup there. But you know what? You wouldn't allow that to happen there, would you? I wouldn't like to see it happen there. I don't want to see it happen. You will release an Ebola virus into the body of Chinatown, and it will destroy it from inside, and you have no ability to inoculate Chinatown, but you can quarantine the carrier. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am?
Good morning, honorable members of the City Council and concerned community members. My name is Cory Jong. I'm a youth advocate for the Chinatown Service Center and a resident of Chinatown, which is a very close-knit community. I work with high school students and young people in the community, and at the Chinatown Service Center, we actively promote a safe and healthy environment for youth. At our youth center, our programs address the needs of youth in the areas of community and reproductive health, education, employment, and youth leadership. The Chinatown Service Center and its youth programs strongly oppose the opening of an adult entertainment business in Chinatown. The proposed strip club at Alpine 211 is only a mere two blocks away from our youth center, which is on the corner of Alpine and Hill. In the same way that our youth center supports positive alternatives for youth, a strip club is damaging, a damaging influence in our community in the following ways. One, while our program advocates for positive role models, positive self-image, and healthy relationships between women and men, the adult entertainment industry promotes the sexual exploitation, objectification, and stereotyping of women and children. This may lead to violence against women and children in the forms of domestic, domestic abuse and violence, sexual harassment and abuse, international sex trafficking, prostitution, and dating violence. Second, while our programs provide education on the contributions of Chinese-Americans and immigrant communities to U.S. society, and advocate for more resources to schools, address the need for language assistance programs, and support access to higher education, the adult entertainment industry wants to disregard our right to protect educational, cultural, and linguistic programs, the building of schools, and the need in our community for educational opportunities. We support schools and education, not strip bars. Third, we promote employment opportunities and job programs for youth that develop our potential and promise, and address the lack of employment and underemployment of youth in Chinatown. We oppose the opening of an adult entertainment business that will create dead-end jobs that leave women and young people vulnerable to exploitation. Fourth, we believe in youth leadership for our community. In order to do this, we need to build a community that youth can be proud of, where we feel empowered to make positive changes in our community, see positive things happening, and where our voices count. We need community development for parks and recreation facilities, after-school activities, clean streets, a healthy environment without environmental toxins or pollutants, affordable housing, positive employment opportunities, and resources for our schools. We do not need community development that promotes the adult entertainment industry and promotes exploitation in our community. As a youth advocate for the Chinatown Service Center, my concern is the well-being of youth in Chinatown. Our program strongly opposes any business fueling the adult entertainment industry in or near our community. The opening of an adult business sends the wrong message to young people. I ask the City Council to send a positive message that it supports a safe and healthy environment for their communities and their youth. Thank you for your time.
I'd like to ask the next four speakers to come forward. Alan Crabbe, Roger Hong, Abel Chen, and Chi Moi, the Senior Field Deputy for Senator Polanco. So if these four individuals could come forward and begin in the order that I call them, it would be appreciated. Sir?
Good morning, President, Council. Thank you for indulging us today. My name is Alan Crabbe. I'm the Vice President of the Vermont Village Community Development Corporation, and I'm here in support of the Chinatown community. This is a, this would be a devastating blow if this was approved to bring an adult center into the community. We have been working tirelessly, and I say "we," community development corporations, churches, community groups, to restore L.A. This would be a significant blow in tearing down the fiber in the community. We're making great efforts as community groups to partner, to bridge the gap between the communities. The young lady just mentioned community development. This would be community demoralization. So I think it needs extra consideration from your part to turn down this approval of allowing an adult center. This would greatly, greatly demoralize our community. Thank you.
Yes, good morning, honorable council members. My name is Roger Hong. I'm a property owner in Central Plaza in the historic heart of Chinatown. My father was a first Chinese-American attorney, actually, to pass the bar and practice in the state of California as well as the U.S. Supreme Court. My mother was one of the first college-educated women of Chinese descent and went on to actually sponsor and manage a serviceman's canteen right in the heart of Chinatown on these very streets. We, as a family, have been here since 1938 and trying to cultivate and nurture the right kind of activities. Presently, I'm a board member on the new BID. Thank you for, for that. And we are trying to bring the right kind of visitors back to Chinatown and even new kinds of visitors. I'm involved, even though I'm an architect and planner, I find myself as executive producer and artistic director of a first fine art festival in Chinatown Central Plaza, because we're going to celebrate our 63rd anniversary this year in June. And it's going to bring a whole different cast of characters. We've been talking to such people as the Bowers Museum and the Autry Museum and a lot of the larger civic organizations that have an interest in art, and it's going to be co-sponsored with the California Art Club that was established in 1909 that's in Pasadena. So these are some of the kinds of people that are going to be focusing on Chinatown this spring, and as a longtime member of this, this community, I just want to strongly support your efforts in keeping this business out of our neighborhood and our Chinatown, your Chinatown. Thank you very much.
Good morning, council members. My name is Abel Chen. I'm the Director of the Chinatown English Language Academy. I'm here to oppose the encroachment of the adult entertainment industry into our community. The Chinatown English Language Academy is located at 800 North Broadway, within a few feet from the proposed site of the adult entertainment industry. We are a nonprofit institution that educates and serves the children of Chinatown and its surrounding communities. We provide after-school to ruin homework help English learning programs from reading, writing, to spelling and grammar for the children of our communities. We are open daily except on Friday. That means there are many children walking about and around our building every day, which I must stress is only a few feet away from the proposed adult entertainment site. The harm and the danger of exposing our lovely children to pornography are simply unimaginable. If we lose this battle, it signifies an end for our children to gain an education. These children will have no place to go after school. They will not receive help for their homework, and most of all, there is no doubt in my mind that many of these children will be held back without the help of an education assistance institution. So please, don't take that away from our children. I therefore urge you, councilwomen and councilmen, to join our fight to keep pornography out of our neighborhood. Thank you very much.
My name is Chi Moi, Senior Field Deputy for State Lieutenant Richard Polanco. Let me first thank President Protem Swanich for giving me the chance to speak, and also Councilwoman Hernandez, Councilwoman Fira, Councilwoman Bernson, Councilwoman Walters, Councilwoman Padilla, Councilwoman Pacheco, Councilwoman, if I get this one correct, Ridley Thomas. Thank you for staying and giving us the forum that we need. I'm here on behalf of State Lieutenant Richard Polanco. I'm also the English Secretary to the Chinese Consular Benevolation Association, Vice President of the Chinese American Citizens Alliance, President and Founder of the Friends of Castler School, Founder of the Chinese American Elderly Association. But most importantly, I am the father of two young boys, age 14 and 10, who do not live next to, or will not next to, an adult entertainment complex next to their home. I pay great respect to my elders, because if it wasn't for my father and mother, I wouldn't be here. And today, I want to take 15 seconds to thank everyone here from the community expressing their deepest concern to this complex that will come in. And let me say a few things in Cantonese. As you can see today, these are not your typical person that comes down on City Hall every day. They're here because of the deepest absolute opposition to the adult entertainment complex in Chinatown. I gave testimony about two years ago at a public hearing of the L.A. City Planning Council. At that time, I was, I was aware that within 500 feet of a proposed adult entertainment center of a public park, or a public school, or religious institution, you cannot open an adult entertainment complex. Last night, after the first candidate forum in Chinatown, I, myself and my wife, walked Chinatown again at 9:30. Chinatown is full of churches and temples. Twenty-six family associations all have some kind of temple in their association. Next to 211 Alpine Street, which is what you see the sign here today, there are a number of temples located close to or within that distance, I believe. I walked it again. There's a notable Kong Chau Family Association, who has a, a temple on their second floor, deemed a religious institution, that is close to, if not within the 500-feet radius of the proposed adult entertainment club. If you walk around the corner, the Wong's Family Association, on their second floor, they also have a small altar and a temple. There are no, no, no location in Chinatown that is far away from either a temple, or church, or school, or religious institution like many that we have. I, today here, call for, because of that reason, a adult entertainment, adult entertainment free zone in Chinatown. We do not need that, and because of the proximity to all our temples and churches. I call for, again, an adult entertainment free zone in Chinatown. This is a 911 issue for Chinatown. I appreciate your support and thank you for giving me the time.
Thank you, sir. Prior to recognizing Councilman Hernandez, I'd also would like to thank the field representative of School Board Member Victoria Castro for being here today, as well as City Commissioner Robert Jung, who is also here today. All of the cards that we have on file remaining will be part of the file, and at this time, I would like to recognize Councilman Hernandez.
Members of the Council, not only do you have the people who are here in this room, but also my understanding is 315 and 316 are full of people representing opposition to the 211 establishment at this time. I have a few points I want to make, because I do believe we have to go into closed session and listen to the city attorney in detail in order to protect the issues of qualified immunity for this body. But at the same time, I need to share with you that never have I seen, and I've represented Chinatown now for nine and a half years, and part of that time, Councilwoman Rita Walters also represents part of Chinatown, a united voice, the way you've seen today. Not only from the community and the business community, but the churches, the associations, everybody standing up for an issue they believe very strongly in. You see, Simi Valley's decision cannot be the controlling law. It needs to be changed. I say that because not to fight it means we allow it to be the controlling law. You need to understand that the Simi Valley process appeared to be calculated to thwart the First Amendment business from establishing anywhere in its city limits, and this is not the case in the city of Los Angeles. You also need to know that as far as building and safety was concerned, in its handling of the simultaneous processing of the school application at next door to 211 and 211 Alpine, the applications were handled separately and neutrally. Thus, there was no reason to have a drastic standard that Simi Valley sets impact Los Angeles. Now, I say that because imagine having next to any of your elementary schools, any of your elementary schools in your district, an adult entertainment establishment within two football fields, 600 feet, because that's the case with Castlar. But our ordinance allowed it. What our ordinance also said is that a school could be established, and that's what happened with the English Academy. And they, these applications were being processed simultaneously. The reality is the English Academy was established and was permitted prior to 211. You need to know that there are alternative sites for adult entertainment establishments in Los Angeles, and just recently, I've seen a few established along the 10 freeway in the industrial zone of the city, not next door to schools. You need to understand that this city, with our ordinance as it currently stands, is impacting communities like Chinatown in a very different way. When we talk about family associations and we talk about trade associations, it's the equivalent in many cases as an embassy. The fact that Chinatown is a gathering place for these associations, and they talk about 28 of them, is a reality. All you got to do is go to 28 different dinners for New Year's to understand that, because the family associations do come home and do care about Chinatown, and that's being exhibited today. So again, I know that we have to hear from the city attorney in closed session. I believe that the city attorney also believes that we have some facts we can stand up on to change this law, and again, because of the nature of the court proceedings, that that has to happen in closed session. So I thank each and every one of you for your patience in hearing a community's concern, and at the same time, ask us to seriously consider the recommendation of the city attorney that will be coming before us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, councilman. The chair recognizes Councilman Bernson.
Yes, members of the council. First of all, I want to commend the Chinese community for showing up here today en masse to let us know about how they feel about preserving their community. So you're taking the time out from your schedule.[616.16][616.16](APPLAUSE). Twenty-two years ago, when I arrived in this council, we had a similar problem throughout the city, and I authored legislation which established the 500-foot distance. This has been tested in the courts. It has been upheld in the courts, not only in Los Angeles, but other communities throughout the United States. This is not similar to the case in Simi Valley, where they actually deliberately chose to locate a particular site in order to thwart their ability to locate anywhere. One of the things we had to do in providing, in passing the ordinance, which protected schools, churches, libraries, playgrounds, and so forth, was we had to establish the fact that there were other locations that these type of establishments could locate. As much as we might not like them, the First Amendment, in its infinite wisdom, protects them and says that they have the right to operate somewhere. The real question is where? And one of the things we had to do was provide a map of the city, showing locations where these types of businesses could locate. Now, there are numerous other locations in the immediate area that a particular business of this type, as much as we may not like it, can locate. And I urge, and I'm going to suggest when we go into closed session, I spoke on this before, I think we have to be prepared to uphold our city ordinances. We have to be able to uphold the fact that the Simi Valley case, which challenges our ordinance, is not the same, and I think that this council may be prepared to do so. But I want to thank all of you for coming down. I want to particularly commend Councilman Hernandez for his efforts in protecting the community, I think, not only in Chinatown, but in other areas of his district that have been impacted by this type of thing. I know I've had some problems in my district. We've managed to deal with it through the ordinances that we have that protect our community, and we hopefully expect to be able to do the same thing for Chinatown.[749.49][749.49](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, councilman. The chair recognizes Councilman Pacheco.
I just wanted to rise in support of both my colleagues, Councilmember Hernandez and Councilmember Bernson, for articulating how important this is to us as a city to protect our own ordinance, and especially when we have such a large community affected by such an industry inappropriately placed next to a school. So I just wanted to recognize and stand in support of the positions that have been articulated by Councilmember Hernandez and Councilmember Bernson.
If I could, on Councilmember Pacheco's time, I appreciate his comments, because it is important that we have the closed-session briefing, so that we have some real understanding of the direction we're doing from a legal perspective. I had a previous case where everybody just supported me 100 percent. We lost in court because we didn't take the legal advice and listen to it from a proper perspective, and so I'm just urging all of us to understand that we have to go through, basically, a process of understanding from a legal perspective, so we don't expose ourselves to some potential liability.
Thank you, councilmembers. The chair recognizes Councilman Holden.
How many people are here for this item? Would you s-- Right, I just want to say this, that this is, today is clear evidence that this is the worst thing about term limits, because you have a person who's been working for you over nine years and doing an outstanding job, even as he closes out his career as a city councilperson. He's still fighting, fighting hard for you, and will win on this issue and many more before June 31st. Give him a nice round of applause. Mike Hernandez.
Mr. Holden, it's my understanding they all live in the 30th Congressional District.
And if you lived in my district, you'd be giving me a hand also.[885.22][885.22](LAUGHTER).
The chair recognizes Councilman Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, members of the council, the prudence with which we proceed is certainly appropriate, and I would wish not to preempt the closed session by drawing a conclusion as to what it is we should or should not do. I simply want to say the following. From my point of view, there are things that are just simply worth fighting for: community integrity, a sense of decency, a sense of well-being in any community. And I want to say early on, my vote will be informed by that set of principles and be guided thereby.[939.32][939.32](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, councilman. At this time, there are no further councilmembers that do wish to speak. At this time, I would like to thank all of the members of the Chinatown community, who are not only here in the council chambers, but in rooms 315 and 316, for being here today. This item will be held on the desk till later in the council meeting, when the council has to adjourn into executive session to discuss it. So if you wish to excuse yourselves at this time, we are going to be closing the public comment period. If you have to go out and do what you need to do for the rest of the day, we will discuss this matter a little later in the meeting, but we thank you all for being here, and if you wish to excuse yourselves, now would be an appropriate time, and we'll wait a few minutes until that happens, then we'll proceed with the meeting. Thank you all very much. Mr. Hernandez? Mr. Hernandez?
I just want to say again, thank you, everybody, for fighting for your community. That's very important today.
Madam Clerk, why don't we just wait a moment until we clear for a moment, so we can-- Let's send items 43 and 51 forthwith. Okay, we do have item number 25 before us, councilmembers. Mr. Hernandez had called it special, but I believe his questions have been answered. So we have item 25 before us, colleagues. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on item number 25? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard on 25? I have no cards, seeing none. The public comment period is closed, seeing no councilmembers that want to be heard on item number 25.
That is 25 as amended.
Yes, 25 as amended, Mr. Hernandez. That is correct. Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on 25, tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
That item is approved. Mr. Bernson has requested that item number 19 be taken out of order. We do have some speakers' cards, and then we will proceed to item 44. Okay? Okay, we do have item number 19 before us. I have one card in opposition, and I believe it's Marilyn K. Stout, I believe? Ms. Stout, if you would like to come forward? You're more than welcome to. This is item 19. Colleagues, Ms. Stout, go right ahead. And ma'am, if you could pull that microphone down in front of you, so we can hear you, that would work.
Honorable members of the city council, it looks like I am the sole opponent of the Porter Ranch developer agreement, but that is not the case. I have a statement here by the County Democratic Party, which I would like maybe the surgeon of arms to deliver. It's a resolution-- Could you pass out one to each one? I guess 16, and bring back any leftover. It's a resolution which was passed by the County Democratic Party, and it says, "Whereas taxpayers pay for water, sewers, and schools, and whereas developers encouraged by taxpayer subsidies, bulldoze mountains, continue urban sprawl, and automobile-dependent subdivisions, therefore be resolved that the members of the Los Angeles County Democratic Party, who are taxpayers in the city of Los Angeles, recommend to the City Council of Los Angeles a no vote on the Porter Ranch developer agreement." In addition, I have 15 cards from people in the neighborhood, including some professors, who are urging urban growth limits and better cost versus benefit analyses. And since there are 15 of these cards, and each one would have taken three minutes, I propose that I could speak for 45 minutes. However, I will not speak that long. I'm a journalist, a graduate of the University of Michigan, and we were taught there how government is supposed to operate, and we were taught also to dig for information to see how it really operates. And as a journalist, I sent you each about 12 pages in the mail to alert you that this is an important issue. The things we're arguing about today are the maps, and I would like you to have a good look at this one. It calls for many, many lots that are 48 feet wide, and the frontage 52, 50 feet wide. This will be an instant slum behind Gates, but how will anybody know that it's an instant slum? Because it is behind Gates. It's up on the Porter Ranch. This is supposedly for low-cost housing, for low-income people, for senior citizens, for handicapped people. It might even be for drywallers, for plumbers, for roofers who work on the Porter Ranch. But where is there any provision for schools? It did interest us, when it was before the planning commission, that Councilman Bernson's office and the planning department had an opposition to the developer. The developer wanted to have street signs and building signs that are the equivalent of the city-wide, by the city's standards. And Mr. Bernson and the planning department wanted higher standards than usual city standards. However--
Ma'am, if you could begin to conclude, I would appreciate it.
Okay, I just want to say that we have concluded, after looking at this, that this developer, Mr. Chappell, is offering bad sociology, bad politics, and bad economics. And I'd like to point out that Jerome W. Milliman was asked to look at the water situation. Oh, by the way, I think it's very important for you to remember that when the developer of the New Hall Land and Farming Company planned for 25,000 houses in Santa Clarita, wanted to build there, the people took him to court, and the judge ruled there is not sufficient water.
Thank you very much.
So I want to tell you that you have not sufficiently discovered the costs to the taxpayers that would be associated with this development agreement.
Thank you.
Would you like to look at this map?
You can give it to the sergeant if you would like, and if councilmembers want to view it, they may do so at their discretion. Thank you, ma'am, very much. I do have other cards that wish to speak. They are all for the proposal, so if those who are in favor of the proposal would not mind, we will make them part of the record as for the proposal. At this time, the chair recognizes Councilman Bernson.
Yes, members of the council, in spite of what you just heard, what is before us is an amendment to the existing community plan, which was adopted some time ago after being proposed by our Citizens Advisory Committee back in 1989. What is before us today is a reduction of about 50 percent, some 3 million square feet, I believe it is. It is a 50 percent reduction of the commercial and other improvements that are needed. And by the way, in answer to the school thing, there were three sites provided on the site in the plan dedicated to L.A. Unified for the purpose of building schools. I guarantee you, they will never build them there, but the land is there for them, and that's what's happening. So in spite of what you heard, you have to understand the source. At any rate, this is, I think, a good amendment to the community plan. It is a reduction of the amount of commercial. The mitigations are in place. The planning committee unanimously approved the amended plan and the development agreement. The only thing that is not tied down is the design review board, and that's pending whatever action is taken under the new charter to establish the makeup of design review boards, and that will apply to the Porter Ranch plan as well. So this is, this plan is a culmination, the revision of this plan is a culmination of approximately two and a half years of work by our Citizens Advisory Committee, which approved this, by the planning committee and the planning staff, which have approved this and signed off on all aspects of it. So I would ask for an aye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Bernson. Is there any other councilmember that wishes to be heard on this item at this time? Seeing none, Madam City Attorney?
Yes, you need to take two votes. The first one would be on the zone change and specific plan. After you take a vote on that, and that's approved, then you can vote on the development agreement.
Okay. Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on the first part of this item? Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That item is approved. Now, would you open the roll on the second part, as per City Attorney's instructions, and tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
Both of those items are approved forthwith. Okay? Next item, I believe is item number 44.
Yes, Mr. President.
We do have quite a few persons that want to be heard on item number 44. We are going to begin with a 10-minute public hearing on each side, and then we'll see how far we get. I would like to request those persons who want to be heard on item number 44. If you could please keep your comments brief and order-- forty-four. If you could please keep your comments brief in order that as many folks who want to be heard can be heard. And also, if you would not be repetitive in your comments, that would be appreciated. What we will do is take those persons who are against the proposal first, followed by persons who have either marked that they are for the proposal or for general comments. I will again call you in groups of five, and if you could please line up behind the podium in order that we could proceed rapidly, that would be most appreciated by the Chair and the members of the Council. So at this time, the first five speakers are Paul Malutis, Ollie Foster, Ruby Lee Johnson, Mabel Johnson, and Mike Stevens. Please.
Good morning. Thank you for giving me the chance to talk to you, Mr. Chairman, councilpeople. The issue we're dealing here, it is the incremental purchase of properties by the airport, the city, in reference to the airport. If that happens before the airport issue is being done, then the airport will go definitely. We do not oppose to this issue. We want you only to hold your decision until the airport expansion has been totally come into place with environmental study and everything. The area that they want to acquire the, the city, excuse me, it is an area that in the Plan B and Plan C, it will be used for the cargo facilities and for servicing aircrafts. If that area, it is purchased today with the money that you're willing to allocate on Plan Eight, Schedule Eight, and Schedule Nine, then the airport incrementally is purchasing what you want. We do not want you to give them that chance now. Hold back until the airport, it has been decided. Furthermore, they want to change in the zoning, that is the indication. If they're changing the zoning, and from residential they make it PF, that it is exactly indicates what they want to do. Please wait until the airport decision has been taken, and then give them the money. The important thing to know is, that area, it is not apartment, it's not houses, it's apartments, it's full of rental. So it's nothing to do with residents there.
Mr. Foster? Ms. Foster?
Hello, my name is Ollie Foster, and I'm from South Central. And I'd like to allocate my speaking time to Mike Stevens. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Johnson?
Hello, my name is Ruby Johnson. I'm in, from the South Central. Also, I would like to dedicate, I would like to allocate my time to Mike Stevens.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Johnson?
Good morning. I'm Mabel R. Johnson, I'm Flight Path Coordinator, and I would like to give my time to Mike Stevens.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Good afternoon. It is afternoon now because it is twelve noon. My name is Mike Stevens. I'm president of an organization that is composed of homeowners in South Central Los Angeles, Westchester, Playa del Rey, Manhattan Beach, Hermosa Beach, and El Segundo, and the City of Inglewood. We are here addressing you on behalf of those residents of South Central Los Angeles and Westchester here today, since those are the individuals that you govern. Well, on item number forty-four, you have an item that is stated. In item two B, it says the following, unless the subject property retains its existing use, the zoning and plan designation on the subject property shall be amended, amended, to the PF zone and the public facility designation for any future airport use. Gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, this is how incremental expansion occurs. LAX operates under a variance, a variance that is provided by the State of California. They are required to mitigate, mitigate the homes, the properties inside of what is described as their noise contour. If you take a look at the map that Ms. Johnson and Ms. Foster are holding here, and Mr. Cameraman, if you can just zoom in on the document to the left, to the left portion over here, you will see right in here that there are sixty-four schools, elementary, high school, and junior high schools, inside of the noise contour. You compare that with on the right of El Toro, which you have no jurisdiction over, and they do not have one, not one, elementary, junior high, high school inside of what is called the noise contour. The noise contour is what this is all about here today. Because LAX operates under a variance, they must mitigate the homes inside of the noise contour. They can do that by one of two ways. They can either sound insulate the home, or they can purchase the property. The people of Manchester Square, small amount of them initially, went to LAX and asked for a buyout. When they went for that buyout, LAX said, sure, we'll purchase your property. Why? This one. Because Manchester Square is on the eastern boundary, if you can get a shot of this, Mr. Cameraman, is on the eastern boundary. It is the yellow square next to the blue one. Bring it over here since Mr. Cameraman doesn't seem to want to show it. Okay.
Mr. Stevens, I'm going to give you about another ten seconds, but we've got at least ten other cards, and you've only got five minutes left out of the ten for the entire presentation.
So I have five, oh, excuse me. The people who had item number sixty-two, they weren't given a limitation, and our item was before them. The point is, is this, Ms. Chick-
You were given ten minutes on a public hearing.
Ms. Chick, the point is, the point is that we're trying to make here is this, is that LAX needs this property to get to the 405 freeway. Once they get to the 405 freeway, then what will happen is, people live on the opposite side, they'll proceed all the way to Hollywood Park, because of course, they'll have to tell those people on the other side of the 405 freeway that their homes have to be mitigated. And so it'll go, it'll be a snowball effect. We do not have a problem with anyone selling their home. That's not the issue.
I need you to wind down now.
What we have a problem with is that we want this area, area to be rezoned as an OS, open space classification, which allows it to be a park.
I, I need to call on some of the other people that also want to be here.
Well, maybe someone else would like to give me their time.
Well, you can ask them, and we'll have you come back. But right now, Elizabeth Corey. And after her, Vilma, I think, Slaughter, and then Bird Young.
My name is Ed Hawthorne. I would like to allocate my time to Mr. Stevens.
Okay.
My name is Vilma Slaughter, and I'd like to allocate my time to Mr. Mike Stevens. Thank you.
That's fine.
My name's Elizabeth Corey, and I'd like to allocate my time to Mike Stevens.
That's fine. If all of you want to have Mr. Stevens speak for you, I'm happy to have him continue to speak for the full ten minutes.
My name is Bird Young. I'm in ninety-four hundred block, Redley Thomas area, and I would like to allocate my time to Mr. Stevens.
Mr. Stevens, why don't you come back, and we'll give you the ten-minute time that's been allocated, and there's now three and a half minutes left.
Well, we would like to have the amount of time that's allocated for each individual to speak, for each individual. That seems to be the fair thing to do. Anything other than that is practicing plantation politics, plain and simple. That's what it is. Not to give us the same rights as individuals on item sixty-two and nineteen is plantation politics. Mr. Thomas asked, since we were on item forty-four, people had sixty-two, they preceded us. Why? Plantation politics. Bottom line is this, let's stay on target here. The yellow area right there is Manchester Square. LAX is all the way over here. They need this square to get to the 405 freeway. From there, they'll tell these homeowners here that they have to mitigate their homes. They'll take property, they'll then have to take all these homes out all the way to the racetrack, which is here. Do you see the difference? And these people over here in Manchester Square are being allocated thirty-five to fifty percent more than what their property is, zone is, is actually valued at, because they have a different zip code than the nine zero three zero one. They have nine zero four five at the far corner. It's awfully unfair that the cameraman does not want to work with us and let public information be disseminated. But nevertheless, we'll continue on. Well, and in reference to LAX's plan, which is submitted by Mayor Richard Reardon, this is their plan. The 405 freeway is here. If you see these arrows that are here, these are the airplanes. These airplanes, if they're here, and this is car, this is cargo and maintenance facilities, the actual 405 freeway is here. Do you see how far they're coming? Presently, the runway stops here, at this area here. Right here is where the runway presently stops. So they're extending the runway across the Poville Boulevard. We ask that you grant an OS zone classification on this item. This is a public hearing. You have the power to do so. OS, open space, classification. We also ask that in the future, you give our community the same respect that you give these other communities who come here. Because Westchester, South Central Los Angeles, we deserve the same consideration, the same opportunity to speak, same opportunity to come to this podium, run over our time without somebody standing up here telling us what we can and cannot do. And we deserve to have our elected representative, Mr. Mark Really Thomas, when he approaches the Chair and asks, these people have a bus downstairs that's costing them eighty-five dollars an hour, that they, since their item is number forty-four, and the other items is sixty-two, and this is a public hearing, they should be able to keep it in order, and they should be able to go. Because they, they're on, they're, they're, right now, people have taken off from their jobs to come here. And they've helped their loved ones who are either, who are either there with home care workers who they have to pay out of pocket. But you don't have that consideration for them. That's why we call this plantation politics. And so we, so what we say to you, sir, Mr. Bernardi, is this, you sit on MTA's board, you also sit on other boards. We'll see you again. And when we show up again, sir, we'll be in stronger numbers, because we're going to show the tape. There's nothing like videotape. And that's all I have to say. Other people have to speak, and I hope you give them the same opportunity as those individuals who were here on item number sixty-two, and the lady who spoke on an ordinance, number nineteen, where it wasn't even a public hearing. We should have preceded her, but she had a different paint job. Plantation politics is alive here and well in the City Hall, City of Los Angeles. And our organization is composed of many nationalities. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Bernardi.
Call on Mr. Bernardi.
The, I do have some speakers who would like to speak that are for the proposal. And so we are going to give them the same amount of time as we gave the other individuals, which is about ten minutes and forty seconds. So at this time, I'm going to call in groups of five, and then if the Council wishes to have more public time after that, I'll entertain a motion if the Council wishes to do so. So the next speakers in order will be Albert Goldberg, Dana McCauley, Brian Wilcox, I believe, Nuram Diggerman, and David Brown.
Mr. President.
Sir?
I turned in a card to speak against item forty-four.
Sir?
And I didn't surrender my time.
Sir, we're going to do ten minutes for the against side, ten minutes for the pro side, and then we're going to ask the Council if they want to allow more time for either side to speak.
Thank you.
In, in all fairness. Okay, let's do that again. Albert Goldberg, Dana McCauley, Brian Wilcox, Nuram Diggerman, and David Brown. If you could please identify yourself, folks, and then proceed.
Hi, I'm Albert Goldberg, and I'm here for my mom and dad, who's eighty, and my mother's seventy on crutches. And if I tell them what's happening, I'm afraid my dad, with a weak heart, might get a heart attack after the plans he made. What, they, if, they had their plan, and if the airports expanded outside of LAX to ten areas in Southern California, it would be an absolute environmental disaster, not only for all the schools in Southern California, Riverside, Orange, and LA counties, but also the groundwater. If you look at the Southern California area, it's a mountainous area that goes down into a plain to the sea. What the people are proposing is to dump all of the jet fuel all over Southern California, from Ontario to Van Nuys to El Toro, everywhere, and create these zones, ten miles by ten miles wide, which will basically like ripples in a pond when you throw a stone in over the landscape of Southern California, cause huge amounts of pollution, which will eventually grow together, wash down into the groundwater, and down through all of these three counties, back to where it started from, from LA. There is a reason that airports are over the ocean, whether it be Kennedy, LaGuardia, or Bodies of Water, or LAX, because half of that hundred square mile area is over the ocean, and the people aren't exposed to the sound damage hearing, the lung capacity, the pollution, and also the other problems. It's an environmental disaster comparable to when Firestone, GM, and Standard Oil were found tearing down the red cars to rebuild them, to build the freeways, which caused a massive pollution. You're going to pollute the groundwater supply throughout Southern California, the air, and cause damage to schools, not only the sixty-two in their neighborhood, but throughout every county in the area. So I'm done.
Thank you, sir. Dana McCauley?
Hello, I'm Dana McCauley, and I donate my time to David Brown.
Brian Wilcox, I release my time to Mr. Brown. Nuram Daggerman, and I'd like to allocate my time to Mr. Brown also. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. My name is David Brown. I'm here to speak for you, for, excuse me, I'm kind of nervous. First of all, I'd like to say before I read my letter that Manchester Square is not primarily apartment buildings. There are a large number of single-family residents, and I owned one of the properties there. I am here today as a member of the Leadership Group of Manchester Square Airport Concerns. I would like to thank you for this opportunity to voice our concerns regarding the voluntary acquisition program for Manchester Square. I would like to clarify some issues and the position of the community regarding the program. First and most importantly, this voluntary acquisition program must be allowed to continue, primarily for the sake of the members of the community who are still there but wish to leave. This program was developed at the request of the community out of the soundproofing program underway at LAX. It is a program required as compensation and mitigation for the previous expansions at LAX. Lawa now owns about half the single-family homes in Manchester Square, and they intend to demolish or remove all of the structures on these properties, even, even if the program is stopped now. In addition, if you have seen the neighborhood recently, you know that the appearance is very unattractive, to say the least, because Lawa has started to demolish the homes that they own. Under these circumstances, if the program were halted for the remaining property owner, were halted, the remaining property owners would be, would never be able to get anything close to fair price for their homes on the open market if they could sell them at all. So essentially, by stopping the program now, you would be trapping the remaining property owners for an undetermined period of time. This program is not part of the master plan. I don't think that it is necessary to go back over the whole history of the development of this program, but I will be available to answer questions or explain, expand on my comments after I have completed my statement. I personally, and the vast majority of property owners and tenants in Manchester Square are opposed to the ongoing continuous remodeling and the proposed master plan expansion of LAX. But this is not why we are here today. Others who come before you here today will raise issues regarding zoning changes. Mr. Mike Stevens of LAX No Expansion and others have been working hard lately to stop the expansion at LAX and have slightly different views on the issues regarding Manchester Square. I take Mr. Stevens at his word, though, when he publicly states that his organization and others are not against the acquisition program, but against the changing of the zoning of the property. I will not fall into Lawa's trap and try to criticize or argue against Mr. Stevens' points. Lawa is the enemy, and not, and we should not be fighting with each other. I believe, I believe Lawa officials brought this problem upon us by including Manchester Square in concepts B and C as being developed into cargo facilities with direct airplane access. MSAC is on the record since December of nineteen ninety-eight as being opposed to any master plan concept that includes airport development of Manchester Square. I have brought a copy of the letter we sent to the, to the Board of Airport Commissioners at that time, asking them not to approve any conceptual plans that included Manchester Square. I would like to include this letter as part of my statement here today. I would like to include this letter as part of my statement here today. The way I see it, the issue here today is what will happen to Manchester Square after it is purchased by Lawa. Lawa officials have explained to me that it was the city planning department that required the language change, the language to change the zoning of Manchester Square from R, residential, to PF, public facilities. In a neighborhood meeting last night in Manchester Square, Mr. Herb Glasgow of the city planning department, who I believe is here today, told us that it was, in fact, a request by the planning department at the time of the first groups of properties were being processed back in the fall of 1999. He also explained that he felt it would be of no advantage for the airport to have the property zone PF. I believe Mr. Stevens will argue, and has argued, that this zone change makes it easier for Lawa to go back and get the properties rezoned to M, manufacturing, which would be required for Lawa to use Manchester Square as a cargo facility. I am not a city planning expert, and as far as I know, we don't have any city planning experts or high-priced attorneys in Manchester Square to provide us independent information on whom may be correct. I am very disappointed to see that our council member is unable to attend this hearing today to help us defend a program that she likes to say she helped create. It has come to my attention that she has introduced a motion to this city council that the Manchester Square area be rezoned to OS, open space, or parkland, and it will be heard next week. We would strongly support a zone change to OS. But in the event that a consensus cannot be reached here today regarding the future zoning of Manchester Square, I would urge you to remove the language regarding the zoning altogether from the motion of approval for batches seven and eight, and go ahead with the acquisition program.
Sir.
I got one more sentence, and I'm done.
Okay.
The, continue the discussion regarding the zoning at another time, but please continue the acquisition program now because people, lives, and livelihoods are at stake here. Do not abandon the people of Manchester Square and use us as a political football for the ongoing battle between Lawa and anti-expansion forces. Thank you.
We have temporarily lost a quorum, so for the moment, for the moment, we are going to pause to see if we can regain a quorum in just a moment. If we cannot, we are not going to be able to proceed. So if you would all just be patient a moment while I have the sergeants try to locate the 10th member, I would appreciate it. We are, we are back. We have a minute and a half left. Michael Pacman, Robert Wright, Joe Lang, Daniel Flannery. Folks, if you could please come forward. And if you'd like to keep your comments brief, all of you can be heard. Go right ahead.
Council members, thank you for hearing us. I can, I have lived in Manchester Square for almost 20 years, and we had plans to retire there. We had two pieces of property, one we planned to turn into apartment buildings, the other for us to live in. At this point, our neighborhood is half destroyed, and I think that you have some obligation to us to finish what you started, let us move on with our lives, and appreciate your, your considering what I've said. Thank you.
My name is Robert Wright, and I am a resident of Manchester Square, and I'd like
to yield my time to Cheryl.
Thank you. Good afternoon. First of all, let me say, this is the first time I've ever spoken before a council group like this, and I thank you for the opportunity. I just wanted to make this very personal. I am a homeowner in the Manchester Square area, and I bought over there about six years ago as a single individual. It was a good community, I bought, and the situation has come up with the airport. I just want to leave this with you. There are people over there with families, houses are being torn down, there are vacant lots. We cannot stop this program. It's going strong right now. You can't leave us there with homes that are vacant, with vacant lots. There's all type of crime elements that's subject to come in. As a single individual, I cannot afford to stay in an area like that. And I ask that you consider the families, the people that have invested their hard-earned monies to own the homes in this area. And now that it's being devastated and destroyed, we must have the opportunity to move forward and look for housing someone else, somewhere else. So that I plead with you, and I asked you not to stop the program. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Joe Lang. I own a Blaze oven 5520, West 90th, and I'm for, for the buyout, because it's not a safe place to go anymore. You go there and you try to do some work, I do my own maintenance, and I feel like I'm being harassed and brought to light. So I'm for the buyout. Thanks very much.
Thank you, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Daniel Flannery. I'm a member, or a resident, rather, of Manchester Square. One thing that I don't think has been addressed up to this point is the financial impact that this program is having on several people in this neighborhood, my wife and I included. We are in escrow with the airport to have our house purchased. We are also in escrow to purchase another property. We have made a significant financial investment in this as far as loan fees, inspection fees, appraisal fees. If this program is stopped or even delayed for a short amount of time, that will be financially devastating for us and also for others. So I urge you to go ahead with this program. As Mr. Brown stated, if there is a problem with the wording, if there's a problem with the zoning, that should be addressed separately, but the program should go forward.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. We will make the remaining speakers' cards as part of the file. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had heard the, those who were raising the concerns initially, and what they were asking for is that if the program goes forward, that the land be zoned to open space. As I think one of the other speakers did mention, and I recall that yesterday there was a motion introduced by Councilmember Galanter to say that this area shall be initiated for both a plan amendment and a zone change to open space. So I think that that request, so that this is just not something that opens the door and accelerates the airport expansion, but in fact, as these airports, as these properties are purchased, that they move into an initiated area for a buffer zone, I think is appropriate. And I would also just like to indicate, I would also like to indicate that we did get today, all of us have an envelope on our desk with over 73 letters of support from property owners in the area, and in particular, a, an update saying that already 293 homes in this property have qualified for application and advanced acquisition. So this is a project that has been committed by the airport. We heard an awful lot of people testify that they have depended on it, they have come to understand it, and I think if we create, after this, in an approval today, action next week on the initiation of open space, then I think we will be satisfying both sides. And so I move the approval today.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilman Burnson.
Can I just rise to second the motion? I know Ms. Galanter wants us to move forward with this, and I fully support the motion.
Okay. Is there any other council member that wishes to be heard at this time?
Open the roll.
Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on this item and tabulate the vote?
10 ayes.
That item is approved forthwith.
Now nine.
Next item.
Mr. President, you wish to do item number 26. There's a, an amending motion on that, and Councilman Hernandez called that special.
Mr. Hernandez, was that resolved?
My understanding, it's all been amended and corrected.
Okay. There's no council member that wishes to speak on item number 26, so Madam Clerk, open the roll on 26, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Thank you. Next, we will take item number nine. I do believe, I've been informed by Mr. Burnson, that all those present are in favor of the proposal and have waived their right to speak. I would hope that is the case. Is there any person in the audience who objects to item number nine? Seeing none, is there anyone, any council member? Mrs. Chick, did you wish to speak on item nine? Your button is pushed.
Oh, I think that was accidental.
Okay. If you would please remove Mrs. Chick from the speaker's queue. And open the roll on item number nine and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That item is approved forthwith. Next, we'll take item number 10. Council members, I do have some speakers' cards on both sides of item number 10. With your permission, we are going to ask for a five-minute public hearing on each side. We will go through the same drill as we have on the other public hearings. I would caution persons who wish to speak to do so quickly, for the council is going to lose a quorum in a half hour or less. So first, we are going to take those individuals against the proposal on item number 10, followed by the persons for the proposal. This is five minutes on each side. That would give you each one minute to speak, if you would please. Sylvia Nickel, Vicki Cassis, Jean Shigamatsu, William Schluter, and Al Cassis. If you could please make your way forward to the podium. This is a five-minute public hearing. If you would proceed.
Good afternoon, my name is Bill Schluter. I'm a resident, I live approximately 60 feet from the playground that we are discussing today. I have a brief statement. Undoubtedly, if you have not already heard, then you will hear, the impassioned pleas of parents, grandparents, and faculty to let the children of the Wiltshire Boulevard Temple School play on the proposed playground equipment so that their motor skills will be allowed to develop. Let it be known once and for all that the West Los Angeles community, represented here today by the few of us who could afford to do so, also want their children to play on playgrounds and for that playground, and for that play, excuse me, to advance the development of their motor skills. But please do not be misled, there are, in fact, playgrounds on the campus of the Wiltshire Boulevard Temple School that are for that very purpose. Playgrounds that were planned, discussed, negotiated, and finally agreed upon by the Wiltshire Boulevard Temple and the community. The playground in question today is not one of them. It is the product of a circuitous legal dodge job employed by the temple to purposefully deceive and circumvent the community, a community in which they are its newest member. Very early on in the development phase of the school property, they knew that they had a space problem. Given the circumstances, they had two chances, or two choices, rather, when faced with resolving a playground shortage issue. Go to the community to discuss and come to an agreement on the alternate playground sites, or go around the community, and that is exactly what they did. There are remedies to their space problems today that do not violate the community's pact with the school, remedies other than to simply turn a blind eye to what has transpired for the last four and a half years. The community of West Los Angeles sincerely implores you to engage the zoning office in a thorough review of the facts of this case before any permits are granted. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name's Al Cassis. I've lived in the Westlake community, known as Sawtelle, for over 40 years. My grandparents lived there, my parents lived there, and all my children were born there. My neighbors also are longtime residents. They've been there for 50 years or more. Most either had to work or were too elderly to make the trek downtown. These people include Latinos, Irish, German, African Americans, and Japanese. Let me start by reminding the council that neighborhoods all over this city look to government for their guidance. This community came in good faith to the zoning administrator and the council for help with this project. I hope you all read the letter that was sent to you to your office. After a rocky start, the school officials and neighbor groups finally got dialogue going and school plans and neighbor, and school plans with the neighbors' concerns. There were three major concerns of the impacts of the school would have on our community. Those were noise, traffic, intrusion on weekends, and playgrounds on the perimeter. The building plans that are part of the CUP had no playground on the perimeter of the, of the school. So there was no reason for us to include this condition in their, in their CUP approval. They all assured us, the zoning administrator, the city councilperson at the time, Mr. Browdy, and the school, "We're going to build this building here. There's no way there's going to be a playground across the street from your houses." Well, that didn't happen. They didn't build a building, and now they have empty space that they want to use for a playground. Remember, this is where we live. This is our sanctuary from the outside world. We are assured that the school wanted nothing more than to help protect the community from the impact of a new school would have on the residents. This is, after all, a residential piece of property that they have.
Sir, I have a minute left for three speakers.
I'm going to give you about 30 seconds.
Well, then you're going to take up the space of somebody else. So if you could conclude, I would appreciate it.
Okay. Mr. Green, the zoning administrator, did not allow for a playground on there. He said that it's not in his zoning administration file, and then it's therefore in violation of the ZA, but he's on vacation.
Okay, thank you, sir. Ms. Nickel, Ms. Cassis, and Ms. Shigamatsu.
Honorable members of the Los Angeles City Council. Sylvia B. Nickel, I'm the duly elected president of the Westside Residents Association. Our members and neighbors entrusted me and our managing committee to represent them in their best interest. We tried to do that during the negotiations with the Wiltshire Boulevard Temple representatives. We repeatedly stressed the fact that the northeast corner of Mississippi and Berry was our greatest concern, as only this corner bordered on a residential area. We received all kinds of assurances, even a memo is in our file. We feel that no serious consideration has been given by the temple officials to search for another location for this playground. We are not against the playground, we are only against the location of this playground. I can assure you that this long-drawn, long-drawn-out battle has negatively affected the health and well-being of our neighbors, including me. This should never have happened. Also, the property owners adjacent to the, to the project probably will face a depreciation of their properties. Would the parents of the temple officials stand for that if it had happened in their neighborhood? I'm asking you to send this project back to the drawing board to find a more acceptable solution for the placement of this playground. Thank you for consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. If the two remaining speakers could move it along, I would appreciate it.
I'll be as brief as possible. My name is Jean Shigamatsu. I'm president of the West Los Angeles chapter of the Japanese-American Citizen League, and I am here to, in support of Mr. Cassis and his disapproval of this project. I also am speaking today, I would like to just read a very brief sentence from the chairperson of our auxiliary unit of the JACL. The advisory committee met on a fairly regular basis from 1996 on everything from traffic to lights intruding in the neighborhood, and especially about noise impacts on the neighborhood. However, when the important matter of the placement of the playground equipment on the perimeter of the school property nearest the residential community was decided by the temple, the advisory committee was not convened, and we only learned of the matter when the application for amendment of the CUP was filed. This is a deviation of the process and raises a question: Why did the temple not meet with the committee and bring the matter for discussion as other issues had been in the past? Although the temple refuses to consider it, there are alternative sites available for the installation- the installation of the playground equipment. The temple prefers this site, breaking a private agreement between them and the community about not installing playground equipment on that particular side of the property. To gain approval for this program, the playground, the temple was not, has taken modular steps to gain council's approval. Many of these steps are down outside of the city's usual approval system, and certainly without the advisory committee's knowledge and approval.
Ma'am, if you could conclude, I'm going to lose a quorum in about 10 minutes.
We especially request that the city council would appeal, would grant the appeal of Al Cassis and deny the appeal of the Wilshire Boulevard Temple. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one final speaker that I called, Vicki Cassis. Ma'am?
Yes. My name is Vicki Cassis. I am a resident across from the temple. This is the first time I've ever spoken in front of a council. I am not trained for this arena, so I'm going to speak from my heart to you. Members of our community, members worked very hard on the original CUP to assure that our quiet neighborhood would stay quiet, would stay our neighborhood that we've all been raised in, born in. The city let us down. All of you let us down. We elect you to represent us. We went through the process you directed us through, only to come to this hearing today to find out that the only two things we wanted was no playgrounds on our borders and no parking and noise in our neighborhood. You have let us down 50 percent. And that is not fair. We abided by everything you directed us to do. We took time off work. We're all hard-working, middle-class people. All the hours we spent in those meetings, we were not paid for. All the hours the temple's lawyers were in those meetings, they were paid for. We have dedicated to this, and you have let us down. It's a process that cannot happen, and you've admitted to letting us down because you've put a new condition in now that if they go back and try to change anything on the original CUP, they have to come back to the community now. Why do they not have to come back to the community on this issue? Now, not in the future, they should have to come back now. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have council members that wish to be heard on this item. However, I do have a few folks that want to speak on the, on the pro side. I'm going to call a few names. Madam Clerk, would you reset the timer to 10 minutes? And that will be Don Schwartz, excuse me, five minutes, Don Schwartz, Steve Brewer, Rabbi Harvey Fields, George Milston, and Beth Moskowitz. Please.
We will, we will only have one speaker, Mr. President, and that is myself, Rabbi Harvey Fields of Wilshire Boulevard Temple. I rise only really for two reasons. This matter obviously has extended over a period of almost a year. We have tried on the part of the temple to be as sensitive as we possibly could to the issues that the neighbors have, have brought forward. We have agreed with Councilwoman Cindy Misakowski and now the Plumb Committee in the, in the propositions that is on the table and before you today and the recommendations. We are in full agreement and will comply with those. Finally, this issue, council members, is obviously about children and playing. Please bear in mind that it's about children from kindergarten through the second grade. We're talking about five-year-olds to seven-year-olds and 60 at a maximum on the playground at any one time. This would not have been the case had we had other areas in the, on the property to place this playground. This is the best place, and I just would like to show you the diligence with which our support, many of the supporters here today live in the area as well, our neighbors, and I'd like them to rise to indicate their support for what we are asking the council to do this morning, or this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, Rabbi. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like Mr. Perica to come forward. Members of the council, there's no question that there were some problems with this project. It was approved under Councilman Browdy's tenure by the zoning administrator, John Parker, and they approved what the community had agreed to, which was a site plan with buildings along the southern and, excuse me, the northern and eastern perimeter. Subsequent to that, the project came in for an amendment, what was considered a plan amendment, a minor site plan amendment, to say that the last little corner, they weren't going to extend. The community was told about that, but the community was told it was just going to be a grassy area. That was approved by a subsequent zoning administrator, Mr. Green. Mr. Green approved that plan amendment, saying that their building won't be there, grassy area will be there. Subsequent to that, the grassy area was changed because of drainage issues and created some concrete surface and some other, and what had been a quiet reading area, perhaps even a quiet play area, became designated by the school for playing, for, as was indicated, kindergarten, first, and second graders. Subsequent to that, they, the temple then wanted to actually put something in this grassy playing area, and this grassy area, and that is the approval that, or the project you have today. Can they put play equipment, a structural play equipment piece, piece on this property? There was a public hearing. The zoning administrator felt that that was changing what had been the earlier intent, and that was a public hearing that is before you today. As a consequence of that, and the attempt to hold meetings within the community, as you heard, the community feels that this is not what they had originally asked for, not what they originally had approved. But on the, I asked Mr. Perica, now let me ask him now, Mr. Perica, when you acted on this case in the public hearing on the play equipment, were you, were you granting inferentially that this was a play area and had become that?
Yes, because I put 17 conditions specifically on the grant that were geared to the play area and the noise it had been historically creating, trying to be sensitive to the neighbors' concerns.
Okay. Members of the council, when this had come to committee, I did ask for some additional conditions to be added, some of which referred back to the original conditions, and some of, one of which was referred to absolutely clarifies, as we normally have planned, planned zoning cases, very often a matter comes to the zoning administrator, and the zoning administrator in his or her judgment says this is relatively minor, relatively a moderate request, and I will just sign it off sort of over the counter. That's what happened in this case on the earlier site plan review. I have added a condition that no longer can any over-the-counter plan amendment go forward on this, and that every single thing that the, the temple may want to do at this school site has to be shared with the public, a matter of a public hearing, and processed in that manner, so that this can never happen again, this confusion going through three different zoning administrators. But on the matter that is for us today, in terms of dealing with the noise, in dealing with the use, in dealing with hours of limitation, in dealing with the number of kids, both age and numbers at any one time, that can or should be allowed in this, I did feel that the zoning administrator had made the correct decision, and then we augmented that with additional stringent conditions, and are, am adding actually 10A today, which is adding some of the conditions that the community had asked for, including the continuation for another three-year period of the neighborhood traffic management issues, which weren't the subject of today's hearing, but have been some issues in the past in terms of the adequacy of the management of the traffic and the parking in the neighborhood. So members of the council, with that, I would like to ask the council to approve the planning committee report as amended by 10A, which clarifies and adds some additional detail on the conditions.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Walters.
Well, just very quickly, Mr. President, to Ms. Misakowski, I would say I support your decision. Every once in a while, we have a situation like this. It's either a nursery school or another type of school, and now this is almost a nursery school, and people have the audacity to say that they were promised, that they don't want noise, and we're talking about children's noise, they don't want cars in their neighborhood. One, you don't own the public streets. Two, you don't own the children. Our children have to be educated, and to say that you don't want the noise of children playing on the playground says to me that we're not living in the same society, that you simply cannot draw a line against children and the noise that they make, as well as parking on what you deem your streets and not your streets. You don't purchase the streets when you purchase your home. And I don't know how in the world you think you can cancel out children here. I will support this report.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Is there any other, thank you, Councilwoman, is there any other member that wishes to speak at this time? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on item 10, as amended, and tabulate the vote?
Ten ayes.
That item is approved, forthwith. Mr. Ridley Thomas, I believe we have a special item.
I do have a special one. I'd ask, did we take it up? It's a matter of urgency.
Mr. Ridley Thomas, is there any objection to taking up special one at this time? It's a grant. Seeing no objection, the chair recognizes Councilman Ridley Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Special one is a request from the Environmental Affairs Department in partnership with the Department of Public Works, specifically the Bureau of Sanitation, as well as the Physicians for Social Responsibility of the L.A. chapter, who are interested in applying to the U.S. EPA for funding for a pollution prevention grant. It is before you, and I would ask that we adopt it, move it forthwith, because of the deadline being April the 2nd, and we have no council meetings between now and then to act on this as is required. I request respectfully a unanimous vote, so that we can continue our work to prevent pollution.
Thank you, Councilman. I believe we need to take a vote on the findings first. Madam City Attorney?
Yes, in fact, they're, they, the city needs to secure a 10% cash match, and they just got that match yesterday, and therefore that would make the findings.
Okay, let us first open the roll on the findings on special one.
On the findings.
And tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, one no.
Did you? You got me wrong.
Oh, great pollution fighter that you are.
No, Holden, no.
Let the record show that the item is indeed before us.
Hmm.
Barely. And now we have the item before us. Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on the item? And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That item is approved.
Thank you, Mr. President. Forthwith.
Forthwith.
And members of the council, all 10 of you.
Okay, now we need to go on a little bit of a procedural adventure here for a moment. We are going to recess the regular council meeting, and we are going to call the special council meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Burnson, Chick, Fiergul, enter. Hernandez, Holden, Misakowski, Patek, Obade, Ridley, Thomas, Winrich, Swax, Walters, Farao. 10 members present before, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there any member of the council that objects to continuing the item on the special council agenda until Tuesday? Okay, seeing no objection, I believe, is that the only item on the special agenda? Without objection, the one item on the special council agenda of the special meeting is continued until Tuesday. Is there any objection to adjourning the meeting of the special meeting? Seeing no objection, the meeting is adjourned of the special meeting. Now we're back into regular session again. So we are going to take...
Mr. President, there was just, item 62C is a closed-session item. The city attorney's request on that be continued to Tuesday, which is April the 3rd.
Away it goes. Okay. Next items before us, I believe, is 17 and 18. Mr. Fuer.
Mr. President, these are both ordinances on second reading. I'd urge that we take up item 17 right now. I'm not going to give a speech about it, so we can just get to the vote.
Both of these items have had public hearings, and unless there's a motion from a council member, we are going to proceed with a vote.
Mr. President, the city attorney's recommended we have a public hearing on item 18. I would move at most a five-minute public hearing on item 18 for the purpose, for the purpose of complying with the city attorney's procedural recommendation. But let's do, let's do 17 first, and then I might suggest to the chair that we might have a very brief hearing on item 18, have a vote on that, and then proceed to the ammunition items.
Okay, is there any council member that wants to move a public hearing on item number 17, or do you wish to proceed with a vote? Okay, seeing no motion. Item 17 is before us. Madam Clerk, would you open the roll and tabulate the vote?
Nine ayes, two noes.
That item is approved. We now have item number 18 before us. I have six cards in favor, one card against. Let me...
I was going to recommend that we take the opponent first, and maybe that could conclude the hearing even.
That's a good suggestion, Mr. Fuer. Anna, is it Raitz? Rights?
Mr. Fuer had a good suggestion.
Rights from the Second Amendment. Sisters?
The Third Amendment?
Hi.
Ma'am, go right ahead.
Thank you very much. I'm not only here on behalf of them, I'm here on behalf as well of other self-defense civil rights groups that are based not only in Los Angeles, but in Southern California as well. Over the past week or so, we have had some people that have come up, spoken to the Public Safety Council. We've had people address the L.A. City Council. I believe that we've had some people that have used logic, they've displayed reason, they've used facts, and it seems that a lot of these things have been falling on deaf ears. Certain facts, certain facts, I mean, I think it's awesome, I'm a mother as well, and so I see there are a lot of mothers here. In California, I think a big killer of children is swimming pools, kill six times many children as guns do. Automobiles, I don't know how other people got here, they kill 10 times as many children. Civilians in this country protect and defend themselves 2 million times a year. That is seven times more than all the police departments put together. 500,000 of them defend themselves outside of their homes. Now, certain of your council members have said in public that they do not believe that any civilians should have any guns at any time. Personally, it's un-American, and it's unconstitutional. Therefore, we will now be taking our case to a judge, since we cannot get a fair hearing any longer in front of this city council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. We do have six speakers that want to speak in favor of the proposal.
I would just move that we...
If they would like to waive their right to speak, we will proceed with a vote. Is there anyone in the audience who filled out a card that wishes to speak, want to speak, or can, do you waive your right to speak at this time? Okay? Someone wishes to speak? Madam, we may lose a quorum. Okay. Is there any council member that wishes to speak on this item? Item 18. Okay, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll? Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes, one no.
That item is approved. Forthwith on 17 and 18, please. Fourthwith on 17 and 18. Okay? Next, Madam Clerk, we have items 14, 15, and 16, that has been requested by two council members, that we take them together. At this time, I would like to recognize Councilwoman Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am going to move that we hold a public hearing on this, limited of these three items, 14, 15, and 16. Item 15 is the proposal to ban the prohibit this retail sale of live ammunition in the city of Los Angeles. That is the one that was long ago introduced, had come forward to our plant, our Police Commission and Public Safety Committee, and had been recommended to this council for its adoption. Items, item 14 is the Public Safety Committee report that establishes a permit system to regulate the purchase of firearm ammunition. Those two are not in, in agreement, they are in conflict. If you ban the sale of live ammunition, then you don't need...
If you ban the sale of live ammunition, then you don't need to regulate it or permit it. Item 16 is my attempt to integrate the two, but I am going to ask that the council vote first outright on item 15, and that is the outright ban on ammunition. Members of the council, the reason I put forward item 16 in an integrated attempt to both create a process for regulating the purchase, the permitting, and banning partially that ammunition that has a higher capability of penetration, has been the type used in drive-by shootings that penetrates cars, penetrates houses and walls and the like, is that I think that as we look at what the city of L.A. has done and other cities have done, the more that we can narrowly define and focus and create a rationale and a reason for supporting a limited ban and a limited attempt within that support structure, the more that we are going to be successfully able to uphold it in litigation if litigation occurs. And I think that that, actually, that integrated approach has also been, just Tuesday, yesterday, was approved by the Police Commission, and actually, the Police Commission indicated that although they had supported all three, the one that integrates the partial ban with regulation is the one that they feel would be most successful to be put forward and actually withstand any challenge. So that is the one that I am recommending. But members of the council, we heard in Public Safety Committee, and I know that we've heard here, strong support for the entirety of the approach. I think we are a, L.A. is in the vanguard, and should be in the vanguard, of trying to deal with safety of our children, safety in our communities, and safety within constitutionally reasonable steps forward. And I think what we have today are different approaches, and we will hear in the public comment about the different approaches, but I am recommending that we vote first on item 15, to see if this council's will, with the majority, is to provide or pursue the outright sale of ammunition. If not, then I would recommend that we adopt item 16, which is the integrated approach, and would ask that the city attorney be directed to draft the ordinance and bring it back.
Councilwoman, did I hear you make a motion to have a public hearing on these three items?
Yes.
What, the amount of time you are moving, five minutes?
Let's try 10, five on each side.
Five on each side. Okay. What we will do is take item 14 first. We have one, two...
Why don't we take 15 first, and says the first one we would vote on?
Okay, we can do that too. I have two persons against the proposal, and the remainder being for the proposal. Why don't we do the against first? Erica Lozano and Anna Rates.
Good morning, members of the council. My name is Erica Lozano. I am the manager of Programs and Outreach for Women Against Gun Violence. I'm here to testify against the ban on the sale of ammunition in the city of Los Angeles. Normally, you wouldn't find me in opposition to gun control laws, but this particular law, while we realize it was designed with public safety of the city in mind, and we appreciate the efforts of Nico and Theo Melonopoulos to bring this to the attention of the city council, this ordinance would likely be overturned by the courts. In addition, if this ordinance passes, it would eliminate the opportunity you have today to establish a background check system for ammunition buyers that could be used throughout the state of California. We know that criminals are buying ammunition, and if you establish a background check through one of the other ammunition proposals before you today, you'll be preventing criminals from obtaining ammunition instead of subjecting the city to a legal challenge to this ban. Women Against Gun Violence strongly urges you to vote no on this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms., is it Rates?
Hi, yeah, I still just stand by that former one. I just signed a lot of cards just in case. Thank you. Against that one, too, though.
Thank you, ma'am. I have Nico and Theo Melonopoulos, Constantina Melonopoulos, George Melonopoulos, Robert Knauer.
We are Nico and Theo Melonopoulos, 14-year-old co-founders of Kids Voice L.A.
We come before you today with hope and peace in our hearts, that you will, you will hear the cry of your city's children and what, and do what you can to save them. Every year in our city, 150 kids, school age and younger, are shot, and 50 of these kids die from their wounds. In 1998, all but one of these kids were Black and Hispanic kids. This daisy chain represents those children that died in that faithful year. We stand, we stand, who stand before you today are the voice of those children, taken away too early from their parents because bullets exist in our society alongside hatred, violence, and injustice. We present to you, honorable council members, 7,000 signatures of kids begging you to stop the sale of ammunition in the city of Los Angeles.
Yay! Why ban the sale of ammunition in our city? Those of you who are peacemakers, searching your hearts, and you will see that the best solution to this problem is to demobilize the thousands of guns which already exist in our neighborhoods by banning the sale of ammunition in our city. All ammunition, not just high-capacity bullets, has only one purpose on this earth, to destroy and to kill, and that is what, and that is what it is doing to us.
Can a total ban on the sale of bullets withstand legal challenge? Yes. Is it constitutional at the federal level? Yes. Chicago and Washington, D.C. have already banned guns and ammunition for years. Is it possible here in L.A.? Yes. In fact, in the last 11 years, we have banned the sale of ammunition for weeks during the holiday periods, and never once has that ordinance been legally challenged, and the issue of state preemption is still being decided in the courts. All of these proposals before you today will present the same legal liability, so why go for anything less?
This proposal is about stopping the sale of ammunition, not the possession. Gun owners should, would still be allowed to keep guns and ammunition in their homes and businesses. This would just make it a little harder to obtain. Unlike the competing motion before you today, which will cost nearly a half a million dollars just to start it up, the total ban will cost taxpayers nothing, and yet will save millions of dollars in health care and court costs. Chief Park supports the total ban. The Board of Police Commissioners approved it. The Public Safety has supported it, and last June, and the city of West Hollywood has an ordinance proposal ready to go to ban the sale of bullets in the West Hollywood.
Many of you will be leaving in a few months. Let your legacy be that you loved the kids, the city's kids so much that you took a tough stand for them. For those of you who are Black and Hispanic leaders in your communities, vote to save your kids. For those of you who are white, simply vote as if you would if 50 white kids were shot in this city each year. We are L.A.'s kids. We are being shot and killed in all neighborhoods, from the inner cities to the suburbs. We are Black, White, Hispanic, Christians, and Jews. We are your neighbors, your grandchildren, your children, and the future of this city. We beg you to pass the total ban on the sale of ammunition, not a watered-down motion. The shooting of L.A.'s kids must stop, and must stop now. Thank you.
Yay!
Before we continue the public comment, colleagues, we are about to lose a quorum. And so I would make the suggestion that this item, these items be continued until Tuesday, that item 62A, which we had a very long public hearing, we dispense with immediately, and then we'll have to proceed with adjournment. We are going to lose a quorum in about five minutes. So, colleagues, I'm going to rule, if you don't mind, that these remaining items, 14, 15, and 16, be continued until Tuesday. I hope we have a quorum Tuesday. I am already hearing that we may not. But these items will have to be continued till Tuesday. Madam Clerk, the other items which are before us that have not been dispensed with, we will have to continue till Tuesday, and we are going to have to proceed with item 62A at this time in closed session. So without objection, that is going to be the order. The persons who, the persons who have not been able to speak on this item, I am holding the cards in order, in order that you may speak on Tuesday. On all of these items, we will pick up exactly where we left off, in order that you may speak at that time. So at this time, we will be, Councilwoman?
Do have a quorum on Tuesday. Let this be the first item of business.
I will request that the city clerk make this the first item of business on Tuesday. And if I am presiding, it will be. If not, we will ask Councilwoman Galanter to do the same. So at this time, we are going to move forward with item 62A in closed session, and I would ask all those in the audience who are not participating in the closed session to please excuse themselves. We will pick up immediately where we left off on these items on Tuesday. At this time, we are going to call any individuals who still may be present or in the hallway for public comment. Arturo Salas...
Go ahead.
Willie Taylor, Melrose Larry Green. Sergeants, were any of the individuals out in the hallway?
Yeah.
Okay, maybe they have left for today. Okay, we have indeed lost a quorum, but I do believe if there are any adjourning motions, if we...
Yes.
I believe we can do that.
Yes.
Out of respect to those. So would you all please rise? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Chik.
Yes, colleagues, Councilmember Burnson asked me to adjourn in memory of Thelma Meyer, who passed away on March 27th. She's the mother-in-law of Bob Wilkinson, former council member and good friend of Howells. She is survived by her daughter, daughter Rosetta, her granddaughter Pamela, and another granddaughter Cindy.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The chair recognizes Councilman Hernandez.
Members of the council, it's with great sadness that I ask that we adjourn in the name of Delphina Canela. Grace Palomo is my appointment administrator in my office, and Delphina is her younger sister. The way we found out about the news is Grace called my chief of staff Sunday night and said Grace's younger sister basically had headaches on Friday, went into a coma on Saturday, and died on Sunday. She was 24 years old, and was going to be 25 the next, next month. She survived by three sisters, Grace, Alicia, Diva, four brothers, Felipe, Manuel, Raymond, and Martine, and her father, Jesus Canela.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Ridley-Thomas.
Mr. President, members of the council, would you join me in adjourning in memory of Grace Boyer? Ms. Boyer is a lifelong community activist in our city, and I had the opportunity to meet her when she served as my executive assistant when I was then the executive director of the Southern Christian Leadership Conference. Grace died rather suddenly, owing to heart failure. She was in route to pick up her grandson from school, and suddenly became ill and had to be transported to the hospital where she then passed away. She will be fondly remembered by a host of people in the community. She is survived by her daughter Lisa and six grandchildren. Grace Boyer.
Are there any others? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll? Being no further business before the council, the council is adjourned.